Okay, before we rise for the pledge, just want to remind everybody this is the anniversary of the bombing of Pearl Harbor. And I suggest that as we do the pledge, we keep in our thoughts both those that have died at Pearl Harbor and those that recently died last week in San Bernardino. So with that, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Yu.
Yes. I just want to let everybody know, watching on TV and so on, that we have in our audience today Christopher Neering, who is here as part of the Boy Scouts program to achieve his Eagle Award. You have a little ways to go, I would assume, correct? But he's here as a community service, is that what it is?
Yeah.
Is that a community service for the Boy Scouts? So, welcome. Thank you for coming, and I hope we live up to your standard.
Did you have anything you wanted to say?
We could take a page out of your book. Keep it brief.
Okay. Second is, so for public comment, we're going to do it in two pieces tonight to accommodate --
Ms. Krieger.
Jane, you're also --
Jane?
Come up here.
I know you have a busy schedule. Jane Krieger, 22 Cherry Street. I live in Eisenhower Pond Park. And apparently, I attended an LUC meeting, and there been planning some activities. So I just wanted to, I made a little memo, so I'd just like to give it to the selectmen to show my concerns. I think everybody's been very open about, you know, the development of the park, that it should be careful and planned and all that. And so, that's pretty much it.
Did you want to express what those concerns are?
It did like me too.
Sure.
I have before. Basically, that it seems to be it's, the town is working. I believe it's still under the control of the selectmen, the town, is that right, town government?
Still town.
Okay. And it seems to be it's being developed piece by piece, and I think there needs to be a plan. There's, you know, we don't have access to public water, a lot of the reports don't reflect that. As an example, and I did put it in here, first, I know it's volunteers, and we appreciate, you know, all the work that the committees do. But as an example, the conceptual trail plan report by Mass Audubon was not proposed to be a fully comprehensive feasibility study, apparently per LUC's request. Consequently, the report was an introduction to the concepts of creating trails within Eisenhower Pond Park. Since then, the report has been passed on to others to supply information to produce other reports. And this may be misleading, because the original conceptual trail plan report was never fully complete. For instance, the reports haven't addressed the impact of the existing private drinking wells in the area due to park development. This is a health and safety concern that needs to be understood. And as an example, I did attend, I try to attend as many meetings as I can, and the LUC and Forest Committee, and actually the DDP, again, Leah, I was surprised to hear that their understanding is that as long as they are not on private property, they can do whatever they want on town park land, per legal opinions from Town Council and DDP Wilmington. So, there are a lot of health issues that go along with conservation land, private wells and all that, which really aren't addressed at all. As an example, Leah said that the town doesn't get DDP permits for the work that they do. And there's been a lot of work that, you know, I don't know whether they haven't either, but there's a lot of conflicting information there. So I just hope that I will be addressing it, because there are just a lot of different issues. So where I saw that there had been, like, part of a road put in, and signs and all, I went to the LUC meeting, because there was one scheduled. And they said they had done work, and they plan to do work as people come and ask, like, they, you know, there's one here, I put, infrastructure funding. They, there were two plans. The plan that went through the legislature, and I can pull that out, and I did say, because it's piece by piece, and there's so much work, I do just really want to give you all the information, otherwise, it's really just piecemeal, which, you know, seems to go on and on and nothing gets done. But as an example, we contribute under Chapter 90 in the Water Enterprise Fund, yet we're not, we don't benefit from it. As far as I can see on most of the report, we're not in it. But yet, on the plan, where they took access away from the other areas, because you can't really go over private land to get to public land, but the plan, I believe that went through the legislature, shows that they did, yet, you know, we haven't gotten very far in really creating, and we're not asking the town to pay for it. We've done all that work, but really, I would say, nothing's been done. So, what was the other thing? The noncompliant uses, horse stabling, dog park, landscape dumping, farming, this legislation that was passed about farming, but you'll notice, it's really never addressed. So, I mean, I know we can, you know, there's been something that we can take several actions, but again, I just thought I'd bring the information forward. And it's just because it came up, I went around and I said, and it came up when, on Magnolia Street, where they didn't have, she doesn't have access to public water, their water's right there. And I have spoken with the town and also, it's things that can definitely be done and done properly. I think the information really just hasn't been pulled together, which, you know, I've done that now. So again, I don't want to take up much time, I know you have a busy schedule, but I did make a quick memo. I thought there was a meeting like on November 30th, right after I went to the LUC meeting on 11/24. And I will make an appointment with Daniel McKnight, because the CPC handles roads, they've been doing work on Maple Road, but a lot of that information conflicts, and a lot of the plans really aren't complete, so.
Jane, how many copies do you have?
I have, I made a bunch of copies.
Okay. Why don't you give us a whole bunch?
Because I know last night. So I just signed it at the bottom and dated it for tonight.
You know, I appreciate you bringing us forward. I was unaware there was any development going on down there.
I know, that's what I've been told too, and if I didn't drive by, and then I do, I really do try to go to as many meetings as I can.
Michael, you go to a lot of CPC meetings. It's been a discussion, you know?
Jane, were you referring to the Eisenhower Pond with regard to access?
Yeah.
I think they did have a private, I mean, a public way to get into the property, and it was a very narrow --
Maple Road is, Maple Road is private area.
Very narrow, and it was, I think they put a park bench there or something like that, but you come on Eisenhower Drive, and you make a left, and it's right there, and it's on the right.
Not to mention that they drank upon it, but that's what it was.
Well, okay.
That's what I mean, last month, over the years, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Krieger.
Okay, next item on our agenda, JT Berry, Lowell Road property update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the edification of the community. The board did have a posted meeting last week to vote to approve a land disposition agreement, which would allow the town to acquire the former JT Berry property at 102 and 104 Lowell Road. The board approved the land disposition agreement, and the town closed on the acquisition at the Middlesex Registry of Deeds on Thursday afternoon. And for a purchase price of $1, we've acquired the JT Berry property. That acquisition, of course, is subject to the terms of the land disposition agreement, which provides revenue or proceeds sharing relationship between the town and the Commonwealth upon any redevelopment of the property. And depending upon the types of use, and the timeline for which that use occurs, there are different thresholds for that sharing to take place. But again, for the edification of the community, the town does own that property. And the Economic Development Committee, pursuant to the charge approved in February and March of this year, has developed a request for proposals for commercial broker services, and will be going out with a public notice, requesting proposals to be noticed on December 16th, next week, and hope to complete the review and recommend award for contract in January for commercial broker services and market study to begin. And I defer to Selectman Prisco for additional information you'd like to add.
I would appreciate it. It has been quite a bit of time since we brought this opportunity forward to the board, but I really have to give a big thank you to the DCAM, Department of Capital Asset Management, for all the time and effort they've given us in this great opportunity. This really truly is a great opportunity for the town of North Reading. I really, and it fits right in line with our strategic plan, where we wanted to invest a lot of our time now and into the future to develop new growth for the town. And to have a parcel land of 37 acres, which, you know, about 85 percent of it is buildable, that's really good. And I think the next step that we're taking is very important, that's the whole market study. And when that market study comes, we will get that analysis together, be presented here at this board, and then the boards jointly with the CPC are going to have to make some difficult decisions of what we decide, how we want to market the property. But it's a great, great thing to have, it's a great opportunity. So I want to thank DCAM for that. Special thank you to Michael, yourself, I know how much time you put into this, and to try to get this all wrapped up, coming down to the end of the year. So thank you for your time. Daniel McKnight as well, tremendous effort on her part. She's given me a ton of her time. Also want to thank the town of Wilmington, getting us on the agenda to get the final site plans completed through their planning process, because now we have a new boundary that butts Wilmington. And they got us on the agenda, and I appreciate their time they've given us to get that completed. So, we're off and running. This is the start of a new era for us, this board, this town, you know, this is going to jumpstart our economic development. But we have a lot of momentum, there's a lot of other opportunities that we're still continuing to explore, but this is probably the largest one. And I'm hoping, you know, the board is satisfied with the process so far, and you're happy with what we've done to get us to this point.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Gilberdo.
In line with the selectmen's comments with regard to the gratitude, I just would want to express, I think, and recognize the effort of our legislative delegation to move the legislation through and to continue to advocate for the town's interests throughout the process. Representative Jones and Senator Tar were at the table and in discussions, keeping the bill moving. When it would run into an issue, they would help us through the issue. And then finally, just to acknowledge the state administration, the governor, for putting that emergency tag on the legislation to allow it to go into effect immediately and allow us to close in a timely fashion. Thank you.
Mr. O'Leary.
First of all, this is an amazing opportunity and time that the town is, I would say, enjoying, because way back around 1990, 1991, when the state finally determined that they were going to abandon the property, the seated board at that time demanded a seat at the table with the state to determine what the disposition of the property was going to be. So this is how quickly things worked through state government since 1990, 91. And again, over the years, it kind of flouted, and then we did get a seat at the table, we went through the 40B, 40R, 40S process, and worked with DCAM and the state, and Mr. Gutierrez and Lincoln Properties, and saw some fruits of the labor there. But the last couple of years, you know, the Patrick administration putting forth where they wanted to finally get rid of some of the property, and moving forward, and the Baker administration embracing that whole concept and even expanding it, has provided a wonderful opportunity for the town. But, you know, Michael was very generous in his praise for everybody that did, but I just want to personally thank Michael for his shepherding this thing through. I mean, I know he was relentless, you know, our state delegation was very responsive, but I'm sure they were bothered by Mr. Prisco.
A little bit.
And I know that Michael spent --
They forgave me.
And I know that Michael spent an awful lot of time working with DCAM, so it shouldn't go unnoticed. And I personally want to thank him for doing that, because this has been a long time coming. So congratulations, and look forward to seeing what happens with the Economic Development Committee, and what this new report's going to show us, what we can do with it.
Not to be too repetitive, but you know, Michael, you deserve a lot of credit for the effort. And, you know, I think this past year, all of us on the board have had assignments and projects, and, you know, working together and as a team, it's made a big difference. We're accomplishing a lot.
We really are.
And I know you put a lot of time and effort into it, so on my behalf, on behalf of the whole board, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else on the Berry? We have some minutes.
Yes, Mrs. Yu. Just wanted to say that, one thing, among many things, I did appreciate that, something like this requires vision. And I think that in my conversations with Mike, when he spoke about the JT Berry, he had a vision here, and he brought that vision forward. That is very important to us, that in all the projects that we do, that we all have to have that vision on where we see the town down the road, so to speak. And credit goes to Mike and his intensity in getting this thing done, and working with everybody the way that he did, and bringing everything together, that's to be recognized, so.
Thank you, Jeff. So we have minutes, Mrs. Manapelli.
I just, I would like to echo that.
Oh, okay.
I've said it before, I think --
It's not necessary, but thank you.
No, I think it's persistence is what pays off, and you are loaded with persistence.
To a fault.
And obviously, you guys are loaded with patience, and I'm excited to be here at this point. I feel like I'm at the, I'm seeing the fruits of a lot of the labors, but I just wanted to thank you too for --
Well, now the real work starts, and, you know, and doing this jointly with the CPC, I think is a great opportunity for us to sort of expand that relationship with them, because I think we have to work hand in hand with them to outlaw, to sort of lay the future for the town, the future revenues. And I think it's great that we're doing it jointly. And that's why I think the townspeople elected them, and they elected us to work together. This is a perfect example, how that can come together.
Okay. Mrs. Manapelli, we have some minutes.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, I move to --
November 16th, regular session.
Move to approve the November 16, 2015, regular session minutes as written.
Second. Second by Mr. Yu, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous. We have executive session for November 16th. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the November 16, 2015, executive session minutes as written. Here a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Yu, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous. We have legal bills for October. Finish?
All right, that's true. I voted on them though.
It's okay, you can.
Legal bills for October.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve legal bills for October 2015 in the amount of $12,438.42 as follows. Copelman and Page PC General, $9,234.42. Copelman and Page PC Labor, $1,440. Copelman and Page PC JT Berry, $1,007.64, for a total of $12,438.42.
Second. Motion, Mrs. Manapelli, second by Mr. Yu. Michael, based on the burn rate, I know it's early in the year, but how are we looking?
I could give the board a report for the next meeting.
Okay. That would be good. Yes, Michael?
Just had a question, if we could potentially, either the future meeting, or maybe I can get this offline, just an update on the JT Berry legal council that we had, and how much effect that had on the money that we had approved from October town meeting, just get an update on that money and where we have, especially now that we have this completed with legal council. I'm assuming we're going to need some more of their councils as we go forward, when the bids come in and going, so I just want to make sure we have enough money.
Sure.
If I can get an update on that, that would be great.
So on the motion, any other comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous. And seeing that we're very close to 7:30, we'll take a four-minute break.
Bob, can you sign these minutes, because I wasn't there, were you just --
Yeah.
Who was taking the minutes, were you?
It should say in there who was the acting clerk.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Oh, yes.
What did I do wrong, then?
You were the clerk. Do you mind? Well, it's just, there you go.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Oh, yes.
What did I do wrong then?
You were the clerk. Do you mind? Let's just... There you go.
Well, the meeting's back.
Good evening. Thank you for having Redding Municipal Light come in and give its biannual update to the selectmen. With me to... For support, I have...
You got... Excuse me one second. You got names?
No.
Okay. Name and address.
My name and address? Colleen O'Brien.
Oh, Redding.
Redding Municipal Light, 230 Yash Street in Redding.
Thank you.
Hameed Jafari, Director of Engineering and Operations, and Jane Parento, Integrated Resources Director. So I want to start off with this picture here from the cover of our annual report. And this year's theme is peak performance. We'll get into it just a little bit, but the picture itself was drawn in-house by one of our engineers, and my daughter kind of put a little color on it so it wouldn't look quite so engineering-y. The purpose of the picture is that during peak, between about 12 and 7, the price of energy is the highest. And we're trying to target lessening that usage from our customers so that we can save some monies and that gets integrated into the rate to keep the cost down. So that is really what depicts our shaving of the peak. Climbing the summit, the struggles to get to the top, and then we're going to knock the top off is kind of where we're going with this. But last year's, it was go greener, be efficient, and go paperless. So that campaign worked really well. We've instituted those into everything that we do, all of our business operations, and it's going quite well. So this is the first annual report that we went completely digital. There is absolutely maybe two copies in the lobby for someone who doesn't have a computer, but other than that, we've gone almost completely paperless. We'd like all of the customers... We have a campaign that saved $17,000 by getting texts and emails from our customers. So we were able to avoid like a reverse 9-1-1 or a code red. We're actually developing our own program, which saves significant. And anyone that isn't paying by paperless or would just like to give us their contact, we'd like to establish that two-way communication for when we integrate the outage management system. We have new metering system going in for our larger customers. And as long as we can contact people, let them know, the more we integrate our technology plan, the better it will be, and everyone will be notified a lot quicker for the status of the system or any type of power warnings or emergencies or things of that nature. So tonight is just an update on what's been happening in RMLD. We'll come back again in the spring and then again towards the end of the fall. One of the key reasons why we come is that when I first came to Redding, there was a little bit of an issue with the rate. And there was some assumptions on growth that were not occurring. So I had to have this emergency rate increase. And that didn't go over well, for me or for you. So what I committed to was having these biannual updates. And at this update, you know, Jane has completed her preliminary study, which means we start to look at the cost of service model that we did last year, and we start to run the numbers, and we start to look at what's going to be happening so that I can give you kind of a preliminary idea of where we're going. And then when I come back in the spring, I'll give you a more formal number that would segue right into your budget as well. And, you know, I've just asked for a little bit of patience just because we're both on a fiscal year. I'm used to working with a calendar year so that I have all my numbers ready to give to the town so it can segue in, but we're both kind of operating at the same time while RMLD is still on a fiscal year budget. So with that, I'll get into some of the details. I met with the town manager, Mike, and Hameed and I went over there and Jane, and we had a great conversation. We talked about what he might be interested in hearing. So everything that he's given me for input, we've tried to put in here. If you have any additional questions, if I don't have the answer tonight, I'll be glad to get back to you as soon as possible. Okay? So with that, just to cap the performance highlights over the last year, we did a major organizational study and a reliability study. Out of the organizational study, we probably matched about 95% of what Hameed and I did for our initial assessment before we hired the consultant. Right now, we are going through what would be considered change management. We are upgrading the talent management, career development plans, job descriptions. We're moving people around. We're making it a lot more efficient, and we're improving the skill sets of the employees. I want to have all of the talent done in-house because that saves the most of our money and only reserve hiring a consultant if we absolutely do not have that type of expertise. We also completed the reliability study, and Hameed had done an assessment when he came. We compared that to the consultant. That was pretty much on the money. And anything that was safety-related, we handled immediately. So there's some updates coming for the Board of Commissioners in January that will give an update of where we are on the reliability and the organizational recommendations and where we are on implementation. So when I come back in the spring, I'll give you an update on that. Grid modernization technology map, that's... I'm going to show you a picture of that, but that is combined with... It isn't like we're building this big smart grid, but we are rebuilding the GIS. We're going to be creating outage management. We just bought... I did not put in the meters that we have for the residents. They were purchased before I got there. But for the commercials, we're putting in a two-way communication, more of a smart meter. And Hameed has designed something in-house that will overlay that with a mesh network as opposed to a fixed network. So that's... We're going to be integrating the whole thing to try to get that two-way communication across the board without wasting all of the meters that were purchased prior. GIS overhaul, I mentioned. The AMI mesh networking, I mentioned. 500 Clubs are our largest customers. The peak reduction programs and technology, we'll get into that in a couple of minutes, but that addresses that peak time period. How can we cut that? And I believe a savings of 1 megawatt is $60,000. So that kind of gives you an idea of... And then the reliability indices, the SAD, CADI, and SAFI is the industry standards. Couple more of them. We unbundled the rates. We added a low-income rate. We added an LED streetlight rate. We got the electric vehicle charging stations grants and the LED streetlight grants. The communications program I just talked to you about, the texting and the emails going paperless, the meters, all ways of communicating with our customers. The paperless, six-year capital plan and expense that keeps rolling out. So we always know... We have long-term planning now. We're moving the whole entire company for the organizational study. Have us gone from reactive to proactive. That's really what the basis of it was. But a full list of all the accomplishments, you can find on the website. Right on the front, it flashes and says annual report. And if you click on that, it gets into some pretty big detail. So getting into the efficiency and peak reduction. Just so everyone knows, out of an $80 million budget, 75% of that is power supply. And power supply is a pass-through, which means we make no money on it. Okay? The other percentage, we can make 8% up to net of plant value. So, you know, by law, that's about it. That's considered not-for-profit. We have... Our rates are, you know, are below 8%. We try to keep them in that range. We couldn't be too low. That's one of the things the organizational study came out with. Our operating ratio was too low, which means that if your sales are flat or they come down a little bit, we actually weren't making enough money to actually pay our bills. So the operating ratio has to be normalized for, you know, the utility is the size, and this is why you're allowed to make up to 8. So we came in last year around 6 or something. So we target around 6 and 1/2, 7, right in that range. But we don't want to get down to 2 because a lot of our commitments are paid after the bottom line. So we have to be careful of that. So the capacity and transmission costs, and I think I mentioned this last year because I've been trying to get everyone ready, are going to increase significantly. 7% to 9% increase overall with less than 2% for the operational expense. That's the ones we can control. And then 5% to 7% is on that capacity and transmission. I'm going to turn it over to Jane just for a second. She can explain it to you.
Sure. Thank you. As Colleen had mentioned, capacity in New England is increasing, and that's a result of some... The ISO having to maintain reliability within the region. The ISO is the governing body of electricity in New England. They manage power distribution for the seven New England states, Maine, New Hampshire, Vermont, Massachusetts, Connecticut, and Rhode Island. And they have rules and regulations in order to maintain the reliability of the region. What they want to make sure is that when people come home and they flip the switch, the lights are on. So that's their primary goal, is reliability. As a result, they've implemented a capacity auction, which is a rolling three-year average. And what had happened is because of some recent retirements and generation, most likely... Most notable, I should say, is the Salem Harbor retirement. And Pilgrim has just been in the news that they're going to be retiring as well. But as a result of primarily Salem Harbor retiring and footprint power being constructed at a cost of $600 million, it's going from a coal-fired plant, which was the Salem Harbor, to a natural gas plant. And so that cost is passed on to the region in the northeast Massachusetts area, which we're a part of. We can't really change where we're located, so we're forced to pay that cost. So right now, capacity is... As a utility, we're paying about $3 a kilowatt a month, just to give you some perspective. And in '16, '17, that cost is going to go to $15 a kilowatt a month. So there's a five-fold increase, and that gets translated into our rates. So when Colleen says we're developing programs to try to minimize that peak, whatever we hit in the summer of, like this past summer, we're going to have to pay next year. So all of our programs are tailored so that we're working with our customers, both residential, commercial, municipal, to try to manage that peak demand. The lower we can do it, the less we have to pay of that $15 per kilowatt a month charge. So on an operational standpoint, we're structuring all of our rebate programs so that a large commercial, if they're going to put in new HVAC, we incentivize them to put a much more efficient piece of equipment so that has a lower impact for that peak demand. So transmission is socialized throughout those seven states. They've invested billions of dollars in transmission infrastructure upgrades, and that gets passed down to all the consumers within the region. So those transmission costs have been averaging, on average, between 6% and 10% per year increases. And those revenues go to the transmission owners. We're fighting down at FERC to try to reduce that return on equity that those transmission providers have filed. We work with our attorneys down there to try to... Right now, I believe they're getting a 12% return on equity, and we're trying to fight that to get down to more to a 10% to 11%. But it's an uphill battle. But, you know, we try to do the best that we can for our consumers and again, manage those costs. The transmission costs are billed based on our monthly peak. So we, again, tailor our programs to try to reduce that monthly peak. In the summertime, that's usually between 2:00 and 5:00 o'clock. In the wintertime, it shifts a little into more 5:00 to 7:00 p.m.
Just as a question in relation to the example you gave from $3 to $15, those costs, are those going to be amortized over a certain period of time? Are those costs that we can anticipate going forward? As far as the cost of operating the new plant? You're talking about replacing the old plants with the new plants?
Correct.
The $600 million?
Those plants are guaranteed that revenue for a minimum of five years. And then what happens is every year, they have an auction so they can freeze the rate for five years. But every year, they go out for another auction, and it sets the new price. So it's basically supply and demand. So I don't think, you know, once enough generation gets built, it won't stay at that $15 rate. It's anticipated to come back down. It is cyclic. Does that kind of answer your question?
Yeah, I just wasn't sure how it was priced and...
Yeah, the change made?
How long are we going to be locked into that? And whether or not there would be some sort of a reduction in that $15 going forward?
Correct. The hope is that once the supply gets built after a certain time, that price will come back down. Maybe not to the $3 range, but maybe more aligned to the $7 or $8 range.
Jeff, did you have a question?
Yes, I did. Yes, I did. With the advent of the gas pipeline coming into the northeast, and you just mentioned earlier that you're going to rely on natural gas more than you have in the past. Did I understand that?
New England does in general. About 45% of the generation in the New England region is run on natural gas. So that's a concern to the people who operate the ISO. And so this past three winters, there's been a capacity constraint on the region, especially last... Two winters ago. What happens is home heating takes preference power. And the people who own the power plants, they don't secure firm gas transportation. So they're taking it based on the availability. And so what the ISO has done over the last two winter periods is they secured some of the oil plants to increase their reserves in their tanks so that in the event that the natural gas gets constrained, the dual operating units are able to operate on oil. And so there's a premium associated with that. And again, that trickles down to everybody within the New England region.
If the pipeline were not to go through, what impact would that have on RMLD?
It's difficult to say. You know, we're not in the natural gas business. You know, we...
But you have to use it to help generate something.
Correct. We sign long-term transactions with suppliers. And again, we have investments in power plants such as our Stony Brook plant in Ludlow. That's a combination oil-natural gas fire. So we've kind of taken the stance, you know, when you talk to the natural gas suppliers, they're saying, you know, the offset of the costs to get it here will offset in electricity bills. And then you have the opponents of that saying, there's no guarantee that that's going to be there. So again, it's a very political decision. And I'm not sure there is a right answer out there, to be honest with you, in terms of what will happen if it doesn't get built versus what will happen. I mean, there's definitely...
So RMLD hasn't done any studies as far as, you know, the impact that the gas will have on your...
We look at...
On the generation of electricity?
We do. We look... We have a lot of contracts that are tied to natural gas indices. And we monitor that on a daily, weekly, monthly basis. But we don't model the entire region because there's so many different factors. We have, you know, wind power plants, and those are intermittent. And when those can't run, you know, a natural gas fire unit is more likely to be able to turn on and off in terms of the newer engines versus the older engines. But it's a very complex and intricate model that everybody's really wrestling with.
Excuse me. Are you asking specifically for the pipeline that's supposed to go through here and its impact on RMLD? Because Jane's answering it based on our portfolio.
Right.
Because we don't... While Salem Harbor may feed electricity into this grid, we don't have a contract with them or anything to do with that pipeline. So there's no impact to RMLD with that pipeline directly.
Right.
And I think what Jane is trying to say is whether that pipeline gets put in or not, it's very difficult to model the entire diverse portfolio we have as to what kind of impact one pipeline would have. Am I correct in saying that?
All right. So then, if I may ask, who do you purchase your gas from?
They don't purchase gas.
No, we don't purchase gas.
They don't generate electricity.
No, they generate electricity.
They purchase it from various means. There's plants.
For example, we have entitlements in Stony Brook.
Right.
Their entitlements. And that plant is in Ludlow. That plant operates on both oil and gas. And as Jane said, there's constraints during the wintertime, so they've built a combined cycle unit so they can switch to oil. But I mean, a lot of the contracts that we buy, you know, we have nuclear, we have hydro. We don't really... We don't go out and purchase specifically gas. So we're not tied to this area with the gas. I know what answer you'd like me to answer, but...
No, I don't have any preference.
No, I'm just saying...
I just want to make sure I understand. There's a lot of information out there that... And there's a bill being looked at at the State House regarding increased electrical charges... Electricity charges due to the gas... Make the gas by the electric utilities to generate electricity.
Correct.
So...
My understanding of that bill is that the private investor-owned utilities such as Eversource and National Grid will be adding a tariff to their bills to recover the capital costs associated with building a major natural gas pipeline. We're not... My understanding of that as well is as a municipal light department, we would be exempt from that. And that's just my understanding as currently written.
And just, you know, as a reminder, like municipals in 1998, the deregulation, were exempt from deregulation. So we still have a lot of our long-term contracts, like with Millstone and Seabrook, as our basis, and a lot of our intermediate and some peaking. And we keep a certain amount, like you would do in a stock portfolio, a certain amount open into the market. And when the price is right, we might lock in some. We have a real, you know, tranches or different things that we follow to keep that balanced properly. The Eversource and National Grid, the IOUs, you might see them come down and then go back up. Every November and March, they project ahead and they reconcile because they can only buy six months at a time. So it's a completely different landscape from how municipals are able to buy and secure power, which is probably why we're about 30-something percent less than them.
Thank you.
But if you have any more questions, I mean, we can send them to Jane. And I know it's a very interesting subject. In every town that I've gone to, it's like, so what do you think about the pipeline? And, you know, it's...
Everybody's concerned.
It was just in the paper that it was like, you know, this group says we don't need any pipes. And the next group says, you know, we have capacity congestion. We have enough pipes. So it goes back and forth.
Thank you.
Anyways, the grid...
Excuse me. Just as far as some of the ones that you've invested in so far that use natural gas, do you know if they've contracted with Kinder Morgan to buy from this potential pipeline? They sign any contracts? Would you be aware of that?
Yeah. The only ones we have are located in Ludlow, and they're tied directly to the Tennessee Algonquin high-pressure one. So they have access to it, and I don't believe there's any need for an additional capacity.
I didn't think so. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We're going to touch on the grid modernization, but under efficiency, grid modernization supports efficiency, two-way communications, accuracy, reliability, and safety. This cool little thing that Hameed probably did at about 3 o'clock in the morning because he just had to get it out of his head, shows your metering systems, your automated switches that are on the poles. That data comes in through, you know, repeaters or antennas, goes into the fiber loop, and then comes into the system where it comes into a service bus, like superhighway that comes on. And we're able to download your advanced meter infrastructure, your SCADA, which controls our substations, our outage management system. So this is really the technology map that we're building, that we're going forward with. And we have a lot of the components already in place. The switches, for example, in the Capitol are probably one or two a year for the next, you know, five to 10 years. Everything is long-term. Everything we did in the long-term studies between five and 20 years to address long-term planning. Efficiency and peak reduction continued. We have the controlled water heater technology program. If someone has an electric water heater and they are not on that system, it's probably worth calling the office. We would like to get those in and control the hot water. And you can save some money. About how much a month?
Around... Overall, on an annual basis, it's around $200 for a residential customer.
Okay. We shut it off for a couple hours?
For two hours per day, Monday through Friday, just to control the peak.
And the time of use is a rate we've had. We're pushing that as well. It's more of a creature habit. I mean, you're really just trying to shift your usage. And I know it's not for everyone. But that saves about $20 a month if you're willing to, you know, maybe do your laundry, you know, your dryer, like after 7 o'clock at night. And, you know, there's different techniques that we can help out with and how to shift that. Renewable technologies, community solar. I mean, right now, we're going out for an RFP to look at different buildings in all four towns and see who's interested in doing a community solar. We would like to replace the green choice, which is right now that you buy into Green, but you buy into Green Cube in some Greenland, greenish someplace. And we would like to have that in our service territory so it's tangible and that the customers can actually own, invest in, you know, a solar array that they can see a return on investment with that type of program. Solar policy, you know, we also have to look at, you know, the stability of the system, of how much solar we can allow. I mean, we are in the business of selling electricity, but we are also in the business of safety. And we have to make sure that we don't have too much solar, you know, unbalancing the feeders, if you will. Everything has to stay balanced with respect to electrons and electricity. So we have to do that. We're in the process of developing our service requirements handbook right now. For distributed generation, solar battery storage, and the installation of a peaking unit. Right now, we're studying a small peaking unit that is capable of 2 megawatts. So while we're working with our customers to reduce, we would also like to be able to hit a button and reduce as well because, as I said, 1 megawatt's about $60,000. So we're looking at all of the different avenues to address this peak pricing. LED streetlights. Right now, the pilot is completed. In North Redding, there were 62 of them. In FY16, we are targeted at 455. So far, we have 204 installed. The full implementation is over a three-year period. We were given, out of $250,000 in grant, we were given 125 of that goes towards municipal streetlights. The other 125 goes to our online store and other commercials that are non-municipal. And that's been going really well for everyone. We have holiday lights. We just unveiled the new online store. So if you need any lights for the holiday, check us out. They'll be selling them at 50% off.
So do you have a savings? Have you seen a savings since you've installed, you know, through the pilot program now?
Have we seen a savings?
Well...
Has the towns received a savings?
Yeah.
Yeah, somewhat of a savings. I have a slide for that. I mean, I think what we're doing is that the... Towards the end of the year, we're going to calculate what the credits are and try to put them out quarterly of the lights that have been changed out. And I'll show you what the savings are. This is kind of hard to see. Can I blow this up or no?
No, but there's a, a little pointer on that, that if maybe you could kind of point in the areas when you're talking, it would be really helpful.
This is great with the dog at home. I could do this for hours. So, in North Reading, these are the sizes that you have in the high-pressure sodium, and you have some older mercury vapors. The high-pressure sodium's a kind of a yellowy light, mercury vapors, they love them at used car dealerships because they make diamonds shine. This is the light count that you have, the energy, you made that too, sorry. The energy used, the annual kilowatt-hours, and the total cost for the town is, let's see, $69,000, okay? And then for the proposed LEDs, this is not counting the lights that are shut off. These are, these are just, oh, oh, sorry.
Say again?
Where's my button? This is just existing active lights. So the existing active lights, to change them to LEDs, these, now, the fifty and the hundreds would go to twenty-five, and the two-fifties would go to twenty-five. Do two-fifties go to twenty-five?
Yeah, they're the two-fifty.
Okay, so the twenty-five, so if we were to do a one-for-one, a 50-watt high-pressure sodium would go to a 19-watt LED. But that costs a lot extra money because it's not a standardized size. So what we found out with all the analysis that we've done in Compact Light down in Cape, and everyone that's changed these out, is that these twenty-fives are, can replace, the 400 gets replaced with a 93. This is your comparable kilowatt-hours, your town cost. Now, right over here, this is a negative, right here, 1,003. So you say, okay, I'm going from 50-watt high-pressure sodium, and now I'm going to a 25-watt LED, why does it cost me money? And maybe you'll remember last year when I came in and I said, we're not going to have much of a savings with the 50 watt because the rate that was out there, you were getting the rate that did not recover any of the capital costs. Sorry, before my time. But anyways, we fixed it, and, you know, now we have to recover the capital costs. So that's why there's not much of a savings there. But the rest of them, there's a pretty significant savings of $17,000, okay? So if we go to the next one, there's some of these other ones Mike was looking for. So these are the existing shut-offs with the proposed LEDs.
Sorry, could you, could you just go back to that one slide?
Oh, sure.
I apologize.
Yep.
So, so if we wanted to make the investment, it would be a $41,000, $42,000 cost, close, right? Or $41,500? If we wanted to replace?
That's a decrease in our annual cost.
That's the cost of outbreak. It was $58,000, $41,000. That's a $17,000 savings.
Oh, okay, okay. I was, I guess what I'm looking for is the remaining lights around town. Okay, we're going to get to that.
The ones that are shut off.
No.
The remaining ones.
The ones that you haven't changed out yet, that...
These are your total lights.
This is all the lights, except the shut-off ones.
Everything.
So we want to replace them all, is...
We are replacing them all, yeah, and we will be saving that amount.
Oh, okay, so you are replacing them.
We are replacing them.
Over three years.
Over three years, got it, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. The next slide that Colleen's going to show you is an analysis that I had asked for them to do after we met a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
Which is to give us an idea of what the overall financial picture would be if we were to proceed with transitioning all of the streetlights, including those that are shut off, to LED streetlights, because I think it's important information for us to have, and as I'm sure Colleen's going to identify, their intention, if they don't transition the lights from the shut-off lights to LED, would be to take them down. And I, I think that from the meeting that we had with the police chief, there's a bit of hesitation about that, but I think maybe we should see the numbers next.
Okay. So for your existing shut-offs, this is the, this is the sizes that you have in shut-offs. They range 50 watts all the way to 400 watts, and you get some mercury vapors and sixty-watt incandescence. These are your light counts, it's three, I believe it's 388.
That's right.
I remember that?
Yeah.
388 lights. So you are looking at 25,692, and then total cost with the LEDs would be 12,000, okay? So, what you shut off was $25,000 worth, and what you would be turning on is $12,000. Okay, so the savings are about $13,000. So what I had said to Mike in, in the meeting that we had with the police chief, is that, you know, there's, there's an awful lot that happens with streetlights besides, you know, on or off, whatever. We are trying to become a lot more efficient to save money across the board. So when the night man goes out, he keeps looking down the streets, you know, to save gas, to save whatever, and he sees lights that are out, well, when he's in North Reading, there's so many lights that are shut off, he has to physically ride down, because you have to, you have to get right onto the light, onto the pole, you have to take the spotlight, you have to shine it up, and you have to see what color cap is on the top. There's a small little cap on the top. Is it orange or isn't it orange? So in most of the times, you're just looking down and you're seeing what's out, and then he can drive down there and replace it. But, so the intent is that either we take these lights out, and that's it, they're gone, or we take, we leave them up there, we take the head off because the lights that we bought are a replacement head, and we put the replacement head up. But our intention is not to put a replacement head up, a brand-new light that costs, you know, several hundred dollars, and then turn it off. So we're looking for an answer as to whether or not you want them on or off, and along with that, we sent a map of where they were and the street listings of where they were. So, but, you know, we have time, and we were, this is a three-year program, and I think Reading had some lights that were shut off, but they, their police chief looked at them, they want them all on, so, they want them all on?
They revised them.
They revised them, okay, so they went through it, revised it.
So just, excuse me, relation to the numbers, really, net-net, what we're talking about is a $17,000 savings from current cost on those that are on. And if we were to turn these on, it'd cost us an additional $12,000. So the net savings for turning all the lights on would be $5,000 less.
Yeah, I'm going to give you the next one.
Right, $5,000 less, right?
I'm reading your mind here. So this is the existing active lights. This snapshot and the different, this is landscaping, I mean, so $58,000 for the existing lights. All active lights converted to LEDs. $41,000. Shut-offs converted to LEDs, $12,000. So...
$5,000 less.
That was good. I had a different...
You were impressed? You're easily impressed. So those are the net savings. Turn them all on, $5,000 less.
So it's right over here, you see you have current $58,000, all active lights converted, $41,000, active and shut-offs converted, $54,000. Yep, we're good. Want to think about it?
Well, no. You want an answer right now?
So to make sure, in summary, if we took the shut-off ones, we had to remove them completely, and we just replaced the ones that we have on now, we would save about $17,000 bucks.
Right, I mean, for a lot more money, you could put in dimmery balls, there's all kinds of things you could do. You could put a remote shut-off, but it, one of the reasons why we went for the standard 25 watt was to, you know, we're trying to keep the rate down, and you don't want the trucks riding all over the place, and you just...
Yeah, we get it.
Yeah, okay.
What, what does a 25-watt LED lamp compare to in moments?
Of seventy.
Seventy watts.
Seventy. So a 50 high-pressure sodium is a 19 watt, and a 70 is about a 25. But what we're finding with all the towns that have converted, and if you go on Compact Light down Cape, under efficiency, they have a whole big, huge analysis that they did, but the whole of Cape Cod, it's a great, I mean, we use that as one of our bases for all the analysis that we did. But they did, you know, it gets into like exactly how much money you spend for each light on maintenance and operation and the whole thing. So we did the whole analysis, but we were able to use a lot of their tables, and we might even bet the wheel. But I also went to Shrewsbury, I toured a lot of other towns that used Cree and that changed them out, we bought them on the state bid list. So we did a lot of research before we went forward. And we didn't have any comments at all on the pilot. We had two or three calls that said, you know, can you redirect the head just a little bit, it's shining up? But other than that, everybody was pretty happy with them. And everyone thought that the light illumination was perfect when you consider that a 25 watt is covering a 50, a 70, and a 100.
Yeah. Well, there's one in my neighborhood now, they just replaced one light, and I was amazed at how much it covers. And it covers from the street, sidewalk to sidewalk, and doesn't go into anybody's yard.
Yeah, it's downward throw, yeah.
Yeah.
And the police love it because, yeah, it doesn't have that, you know, holiday, you know, nice yellow glow. It's crisp, and the police like it because you can see everything.
Can see, yeah.
So, anyway, so back to some peak measures, you know, streetlights were, were also an efficiency measure. These are some of the, oh, geez, okay, is that it? Yep. These are the rebate structure Jane talked about, our commercial lighting rebate programs, electric vehicle charging. The peak reduction program is we work with our large commercials, and we say, listen, if we give you a signal and you curtail your load, they get a certain percentage back, and then the other half of the money that we save goes back into the rate. So we're, we're working with our customers through tangent, and where we may even be revising that a little bit, right, to make it even a better incentive. So right now, we're kind of in the pilot phase of that. I just want to tell you that we had, one of the engineers from Jane's group gave a presentation to the commissioners, and I am telling you, I have never worked anywhere where the engineers will work with the commercial customers on such a customized, it's almost like having your own engineer for free. It's crazy. But, you know, every program that's rolled out is, is intended to be a win-win for the customer, as Jane says, and for RMLD, which is everyone's rate here. But they do a fantastic job, and, you know...
If I could just add to that, we've worked very closely with the people at North Reading High School, Wayne and his crew there, and they're actually signed up for the program and actively participating. So you guys are reaping some of the benefits of that as well.
Great.
Economic development, it's, it's certainly not RMLD's intention to get into anybody's business or to tell anybody what they need to do, but, you know, this is your golden egg, and we need to feed it. And so, all I'm asking is that if you have an economic development program, that we get invited so that we can help, however it is that you'd like us to help. I mean, we, we helped in Wilmington, I think we were probably, probably a good part of why Osram-Sylvania came to Wilmington, because they had five other towns that they were looking at. And, you know, the packages that we have, and I think oftentimes, having a municipal light, you know, you, you need to live in an Eversource to realize how good we have it here. And it really is an attractive type of thing. And I know North Reading is working on a lot of their resources and stuff, but, you know, when the time comes and you want to develop or whatever, you just give us a call, and we'll be right there to help do whatever it is that you want us to do.
One of your staff members is on our economic development committee?
Yep.
As a associate member?
Yeah, yeah.
He's a great guy. He's been a fantastic asset as we've gone through, because we're going through some planning exercises right now, he, he's been great.
Yep, that's one of the engineers from Jane's group, they're really good.
Thank you for allowing him to join us.
But we're not trying to push development, we just, we just want everybody to remember, this is your egg, we got to feed it. So, and it is a big, we just did the NA PC study for economic development in Reading, and I reviewed the whole thing, and I was like, you're missing something, you forgot to mention us. I mean, I, a lot of people are attracted by coming to a municipal area. And, you know, so I won't labor that point, but major capital improvements for North Reading, these are in the budget, just, just to recap, some replacement of service cutouts, actually the porcelain cutouts, and notable service additions, SCADA upgrade, the LED and the metering.
Could you just go back to that?
Sure.
I didn't see one bullet that I would have liked to see up there, and that's getting rid of the double poles.
Oh, we're getting to that. That's not a capital improvement, that's a maintenance. So we're going to get to maintenance, okay.
What was station three, replacement, so what does that mean?
Replacement, we had porcelain cutouts there, it's a, a safety hazard, so we redid the whole...
It's a transformer that feeds the station's control house and the station's service.
Revamped. New proactive maintenance programs that we didn't have before. So these are all the brand-new programs, transformer replacement program, pole testing, which creates double poles.
Right.
But poles have never been tested here in the system, and we just...
What does that mean, I'm sorry?
It means that the poles have a certain life, and it, it matters what they're soaked in, and you can actually have a newer pole that rots quicker, depends on what they soak them in. And so what happens is, is by law, you're supposed to inspect 10% per year. Well, what I consider inspecting is having a program where you're, you're doing a resistance test. Some people might dig down underneath the, the ground and hit it with a hammer, and some people might just look at it and say, yeah, it looks fine. But I care about the safety of the public, even in the Verizon area. So we're doing the resistance testing, and out of the first 10% that we did, 30% of that 10% were condemned. So we replace them immediately. And I'm concerned about Verizon's area, because Verizon does all of Wilmington, Comcast and Redfield, and they don't have any pole testers. And so we're going to do it following, we have to pay for it because of the union issue, but if they're not going to test it, we don't look at them. So that's why you're seeing a lot of double poles, and plus we're upgrading an awful lot of circuits. Manhole inspections, the new tree trimming program, porcelain cutouts I mentioned, corally inspections, infrared scanning, which is very proactive, we catch a lot of things before they happen, we're able to isolate, take out the stations and fix it, and complete substation maintenance programs. These are all brand-new, standard maintenance programs.
So, it seems to me that we've been dealing with the double pole issue for a long time, and Reading Light will come in and replace the pole, they'll move their service to the new pole, and they'll leave hanging after Verizon Comcast, the town.
Right.
In the case where, you know, we have an alarm system that's on those poles.
Right.
And they sit there forever. And it's hard to, what's difficult in terms of getting it fixed is trying to figure out who's in charge.
Well, that's why we just joined this new program, so that you can call Comcast in here or Verizon, let them have it. That's the new program, it's called Engines. And we have a similar program in Davis, it's basically ball and court. So what happens is, the pole gets put in based on custodial area. So for North Reading, in half of Reading, it's RMLD's custodial area, and the other towns is Verizon's area. That has nothing to do with ownership, all the poles are owned 50-50 between RMLD and Verizon, so ownership will forget that. Custodial, though, so in North Reading, RMLD would be required to set the pole and then pull the pole butt out at the end. So once the pole gets set, it goes into Engines, and it goes to Comcast first, and it says, Comcast, do you transfer, right? Oh, no, what's the order? Electric first.
Electric.
Electric, then Comcast.
Then Comcast.
Then Verizon, and then fire.
Fire.
And so everybody has this, the fire department, Comcast, and Verizon, and RMLD, and any private attachers will have this, and they'll get a, it's your ball and court, it's your turn. So if it's sitting on the books for, for days and days and days, then that's a problem with that utility. So we're trying to move ours as quick as possible. So right here, you, we have four Comcast's that are waiting to transfer, two North Reading fire departments, we have two that RMLD needs to pull the pole butts, and we have six transfers and six pole poles, we must be sole on Verizon or something, for a total of 18.
It's hard for us to believe this is only 18 double poles in the town of Reading.
Okay, so this is brand-new, okay? What goes with this is the fact that we're building our GIS, we're hiring Davies, and they're doing a complete system asset database to verify this information that Verizon has put into the engines.
Does that include the stubs that are left hanging for years?
That's...
I was going to ask that question.
You pull the butt out, but you've got the stub hanging up there for...
So you've got these two four-by-fours capturing the old pole with all the infrastructure on it, attached to...
Yeah, that's the pole butt, that's the pole pole.
Must it, must the poles be, not the poles, but the movement of the cables be in that order, you, Comcast, Verizon, fire? So it has to be in that order?
Right.
So, so if we have Verizon in here, and we know that they've got, what'd you say?
Ten.
Four, about 10.
Ten.
They have 10, if they're in here, we can tell, we want you to move that over, that's all our way of putting pressure on them to make it happen?
Yeah, I would tell you though, if, you know, we're going to be verifying these numbers because Davies is out there doing the complete GIS collection, when are we going to?
They give the number next December.
So, a year from now?
Yeah, a year from now.
Would we get that report?
Yes. But Verizon is also doing an audit of all of their poles, so we're hoping to, that this will be updated with some real, you know, I can't tell you if this is right or wrong.
It doesn't matter to me.
Because it's a brand new system.
That's wrong.
But, I will tell you that in other towns that I've worked, you know, they'd be yelling at Verizon if they had 150. I don't know, you know, if you'd want to call them in for 10. It's, these are pretty small numbers.
So, your plan is, is that when you do this report, it's finished a year from now or whatever, and that's a document that we would have at our disposal?
No, we're building a GIS, they're data collecting everything that's on the pole, so if it's a double pole, it'll go into the GIS and then we'll know that there's a double pole there.
Right.
Because right now Verizon's Engines is saying there's 18 double poles in North Reading and you're saying there's probably a lot more.
Yeah.
And we have another database, but we're, everyone's going to start using Engines and try to make it accurate.
Makes sense.
But, what I'm thinking is, whatever the numbers are going to be in December, a year from now, okay, at that point.
Right. This is what you're going to get.
We're going to get some number like that, we're going to get this report, all right?
Yes.
And you will have, we will know which poles you've already, you RMLD, already transferred cables.
Right.
Right? And we would know at that report saying, well, now it's up to Verizon, sorry Comcast is next, so Comcast has to remove their cables from those poles. And we'll know that and we can go to them and say, okay, it's not, you know, it's too long, we want this done in 30 days, I'm just, you know, making up a number.
Well, I guess what you're saying is, once the GIS system is in place and populated with data.
Right.
Right? Then not only can we call Verizon and say, you know, remove all your double poles, we can say, there's double poles at the following addresses.
Yes.
Right.
The printout has addresses. I can send you a copy, this is just the cut sheet from the front. But, I can send you a copy of the Engines that has the street addresses listed. But, this is what you're saying, this is, they call this, I'm used to calling ball and court, this Engines is called next to go, so it's the same type of thing. Comcast is the next to transfer on four poles. North Reading Fire Department is the next to transfer on two of the poles. So, that's.
And we know exactly what poles you're talking about.
Yes.
Well, so would they, because they're part of this engine system, so.
Right. But, I guess what we're saying is that maybe there's other poles that are, that Verizon is not captured.
The inventory isn't up to date.
Right, yeah, yeah. But, I mean, this protects us, this protects us from the excuse of, well, we're waiting for someone else to remove their cables or.
That's right.
We're waiting for RMLD.
Right.
We haven't gotten the official word.
Right.
This protects us because we'll have the report and we'll be able to just simply say to Comcast or whomever, say, listen, we don't want to hear that excuse, right now we know we got four poles that have to be removed at this location.
This will show us the bottleneck.
Right.
If there's a bottleneck.
See, I'm surprised that that's even here, because usually when I come to a meeting like this, I say to him, make sure that those say zero on the meeting. But, it doesn't, so.
Well, the thing is, we have to remember, it's a dynamic.
That's right.
It's changing every day, so.
Yeah, because in Danvers, this would be about 40 and I would call DPW and they would bring in a backhoe and we would just spend two days with the backhoe taking out all, so when I came to give a presentation with Sleckman, that would be zero. And then I'd be like, oh geez, I guess Verizon's holding everybody up.
There are also some sole owned pole poles by Verizon that it doesn't include in this report, we literally haven't entered that information until we get this yet. So, they're behind. So, there are lots of, you know, and like what you said, it's a dynamic process, we care about the public safety is our number one priority. So, if you see a pole that, you know, needs attention, if it's on the list of being replaced, we immediately replace it because it's condemned, we test it. If not, and we see that, you know, well, there is a potential safety issue, even though if it's not on the list, we go in and install it secure, we install a new pole and then, you know, we argue.
The resistance test is basically studying moisture, but then you also have pole rot at the top as well.
Right.
So, it has to be inspected along with the resistance testing. But, this is getting updated every single day by Verizon, but also by our general foreman, assistant general foreman, so that this can become accurate along with Davies' information that'll be coming in on the GIS project.
That's why we routinely go around and inspect the feeders in the system. Quarterly, we do that to make sure from all the way from top to bottom, to the bottom of the pole, everything is safe and secure. That's one of the new programs.
If I, if I may, with regard to the poles, oh, this is just double poles, right?
Right.
Okay, so then, all of the poles, I mean, you're responsible, if that's not the right word, correct me?
Custodial.
You have a custodial requirement on all the poles in the town, correct? So, when you do your analysis and your study and you survey everything, you'll know how many poles are out there.
Right.
How does Verizon or Comcast, what is their role in contradicting you?
They have to transfer.
What?
They have to transfer. The custodian puts the pole in and takes the pole butt out, but everybody still has to transfer. So, transferred on a pole, it doesn't matter what town you're in.
And again, you indicated that the ones that have been, the poles have been pulled, but there's a stub hanging up there and tied onto the new pole.
Yep.
That's not factored in here or is it?
It is.
It is.
That's waiting for a transfer.
Okay, so it is, right.
You know, and sometimes when they do that, it's because maybe there's ledge next to the existing pole and they have to use the same pole, so sometimes you'll see, you know, if the soil condition's okay, they'll put the pole next to it or they'll, they'll cut it down into a stub and attach it because they have used the same pole. Career development training, I talked about this upfront about the talent management and we've gone to pretty much a performance-based progression on any type of raises or anything. There's no more, you can just get a raise because. Annual reliability indices, the SADI, the SAFI and the CADI are industry across the nation used by American Public Power Association. In all three cases, and I have the definitions here, like the sum of all the customers, so, you know, a large storm will impact it, basically telling you how much outages people sustain on an average. But, in all three cases, we're well below both the regional and local averages for the reliability. And we also take into consideration anything that happens for like a minute or more, because one of the reasons why we capture this is not to say, boy, that'd be great from a reliability standpoint, but what's causing the outages, we only want to target our maintenance money. Do you mean? So, in the next slide, you can see that the outage causes are essentially equipment, trees and wildlife. So, what are we doing with that? So, we have increased our animal guard program, which is kind of interesting, we put these big things on to keep the squirrels out and then there are nice little holes so the birds move in. So, you know, the animal guard engineers out there are constantly trying to figure out how to keep, you know, the nose to the tail on a squirrel is just about the right between the phase A and B and, you know, hawk wings. We're always getting different types of animals in this area that are always causing this.
Well, I thought poles were condos for squirrels.
So, and then we got the new tree trimming program, you know, efficiency, we're not rolling the trucks in every other week, it's like once every three years and it's a maintenance program that's tried and true across the nation. Our reliability numbers have gotten better with trees and equipment is, the coordination study, those maintenance programs I showed you, the age of the equipment is all helping to get those numbers down as well. So, we're targeting those areas. And that's the end of the presentation.
Just a quick question on the tree trimming. Oh, thank you, Mr. Jim. Just a quick question on the tree trimming, so I know you guys have gone through the procurement process, you've awarded a new contract, I think that's all been taken care of. Has there been any ongoing tree work in North Reading since that contract was awarded?
Yes, we have gone.
You have?
Yes.
Okay. Can you give me an idea of how extensive?
We do about approximately, we now, the new contract is based on period span. We have completed about 15 hundred span in our service territory. I'm not sure about how many exactly in North Reading, but there are some that we.
We can get to that information.
We can get to that information.
We started putting on the web exactly where the tree trimming is going to be and we have communications with the tree wardens, we've been working with them on any of the towns that we're in.
Yeah.
But, we have the three-year cycle, we can get to that.
That'd be very helpful, thank you.
And on the website also, they have the map of the area each month being updated, where we're going to be in North Reading, as well as those.
Okay, great.
Michael and then Steve.
A little interested here, a little bit more about developing your peak reduction programs and mainly because, you know, this increase you're talking about and I understand it and I know there's not a lot of control you have about it at this point, but it is a massive increase on our, and it's definitely going to affect our senior community here. We have a large population of seniors, so I wasn't sure if you had a program in place and when I saw you talk about this development peak reduction program, are you going to have some workshops so people can sort of get some ideas of what you're talking about, especially our seniors, to try to help them find some reductions there?
I think what Jane and I are going to do is what we did when I, when we unbundled the rate and we did the low income rate and the LED work. We went on cable TV and we explained the new bill and we took questions and I think that's exactly.
That's good.
What we're going to do for this. We were just trying to tweak some of these programs, we've been working with Tangent and our customers and trying to get all of the programs laid out and Tom's been doing a great job as well, but I think we're probably right at the point where we could go on cable TV and talk about each one of them and feel confident that we have the right rebate program or the right incentive values worked out, do you think?
Yeah, I agree and just to add to that, we're developing outreach programs within the communities that we serve. Today, for example, we met with the Reading Senior Center, we just talked about our residential audits, our LED light online program and for seniors especially, you know, lighting can be a big part of their overall bill. As part of the grant that we have, $50,000 is being put towards reducing the cost of LED light bulbs, they use less than a quarter of what an incandescent does. So, we went to the senior center in Reading, we brought a couple of samples, gave everybody a bulb and one of the directors of that program asked if we could come monthly to offer the ability for seniors to come and purchase the bulbs. We have them right now at our facility at 230 Ave Street as well as being online and so we're trying to work with each of the communities to find out how we can best serve them. We want to do programs at the library, kind of a, you know, lunch and learn for the senior center, maybe something in the evening that might be more convenient for other people and we're really open to any ideas that the town has in terms of outreach and helping our customers, you know, have access to the programs that we've developed.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for. I mean, that would be great if we could have sort of those outreach and programs for our seniors, doing it at the library, I think is a great idea as well. And the last thing I want to say is, you know, you talk about the technology, but in this day and age, you know, if the information isn't getting to here, you know, I have so many apps on this phone that I have to shut off with all these notifications, but, you know, you talk about these peak things and you want to try to get people to have reductions, if you could develop an app and I can sign up so I can get those notifications, so when you tell them, the app can notify me that you're having a real peak problem, I think that's helpful. People care about trying to conserve energy.
So, you're saying develop an app as opposed to getting the texts and emails?
Right.
Hmm, great idea.
It's a notification system that's on your phone and it keeps you updated on issues or in this case, if you start to see you have a real issue, it goes out, not a text, it goes out as a notification and then alarms your phone and then people can go and take the actions in their own homes.
Yeah, but I think a piece of the reducing the peak is an educational process.
Yeah, but we don't know when they're having an issue. We don't know.
No, you're mixing two things up here. I think the peak they're talking about is they get charged based on a peak amount of draw and that occurs at certain times of the day.
Right.
And if they can average it out and bring the peak down, right, by, you know, hot water heaters, don't let them run.
Right, and that's what I'm saying is, now we get a notification to remind me to go down and maybe shut my hot water heater off for a couple hours a day. Those, because you're not going to do it on your own, Bob, you're just not going to put it in my calendar and say, I got to remember every day to go do that, but I mean, you get a notification through the technology, it's a huge reminder, I get them on a bunch of them.
No, that's a, it's a great idea. We had tried Twitter, which was, but what happened with Twitter is we included outages and we weren't ready for that yet and what happens is you have to have somebody there updating constantly. So, that works great during the week, but on weekends, you know, if you're in a storm or whatever, you don't have someone.
Right.
So, we're not at the outage, the automation for the outage yet, but the peak and other things like that, I think that would be great and you're signing up like Twitter.
Or just like anything, like Fox News, I get notifications when there's major news stories. They feed me the information and it's wonderful and I think you could do the same thing, the technology's there, it's very inexpensive and I.
That one must be going off every minute now.
Every, yeah. But, I think people that.
My mother's like, I got to go home and watch Fox, I'm sorry, I can't.
No, but people that care about conserving energy, they're going to welcome the notifications to, you're pushing information to us to say, hey, go do this.
Yeah.
Go do this.
We'll be gradually moving toward that, not so much to the app, but then, you know, you saw the technology roadmap, we go and voice over the IP, which is now the new technology so we automatically can, you know, notify people. We're also employing the IVR, which IVR is a technology that, you know, we can have two-way communication.
Yes.
With our customers.
Yeah.
So, that way we can reach out to the customers and send them messages when there's an outage or when there's an event going on. So, it is in transition technology, but, you know, we can.
Yeah, but that must be a good intro. I like it, thank you.
Great use of it.
You win the technology award for the line.
No, I'm just trying to.
The tech tip award.
Steve. Just, you're not tuned into MSNBC though, Michael Chris.
No, I was going to say.
As of a second.
He wants accurate information.
Thanks, Jeff.
They're running. Politics Saturday. Are there any needs, are there any physical expansion needs that you foresee within the town of North Reading that we should be aware of?
No, the only expansion right now.
You weren't talking about the distributed generation at the station three that, you know, the plan?
Well, it's a pilot right now, it's in the capital. I mean, we talked about distributed generation possibly being installed at the substation, but we're not really there yet. But, the, the only real expansion areas in Wilmington are by the target area, there's going to be a new substation being built there over the next couple of years.
So, what we have offered and actually swapped off with Reading Municipal Light a few years back appears to be sufficient for the foreseeable future, Debbie had the DPW site. And then, are you looking to encourage things like solar farms or anything like that? And I don't know if we would deal with you directly or not?
Well, we're doing the community solar, so we're looking at, oh, we're having an RFP come in so that the vendors come in and look at all the different potential sites and they can put together some packages so we can look at them. It's very difficult to look at the financials and what the package is unless the vendors know what the sites are, what direction, how large it is, if it's a rooftop, if it's on the ground and then they'll, they'll put together ready packages and so we can take a look at them and sit down with the towns and say, is this anything you're interested in? So, there's no commitment at this point, we're really just, what is the, what is the vendor's dream?
We're working with the vendor now and the RFP is in development, so we're hoping to get that out.
So, the vendor will then reach out to potential property owners or communities?
We're looking at municipal buildings.
Okay, municipal buildings or municipal?
Own land.
Own land, right.
Yes. And so, that's kind of what the way, the way we want to structure the pilot.
Okay.
so that the town is able to get, you know, perhaps a lease payment and associated tax payment with the, with the equipment there, and then we're able to sign a PPA, which we can in turn develop community solar, and our customers can sign up for that resource.
Okay, so that, that's a, so somebody will be contacting us?
Correct. Yeah, we, we've worked with Mike a little.
Yeah, I think there's a list, for each of the towns, there's potential lists that are put together. I believe we have a copy of that, but we can have Tom send it back out if you want to look at it, maybe add to it or whatever.
Well, I'm sorry.
So just a couple of comments on that. First, my understanding is that Tom has been in discussions with the Finance Administration Director of the School Department, as well as the Buildings and Grounds Superintendent, so the buildings that I think that they're interested in are the four school buildings here in the community, at least at this point in time, and I think it's a pretty preliminary conversation in terms of the, trying to analyze what's even feasible, that's my understanding at least.
Correct.
But those were the properties that they indicated to us that they were interested in, and they have that dialogue ongoing. And then I just had a follow-up question on this, the issue that you had brought up about the DPW complex, so you, I mean...
Is the DPW a potential land for the Station 3 on the list? Is that what you're...
Yeah, I believe, my understanding from, again, this was a conversation I think I had with Tom, maybe in July, that there is some space within the footprint of the RMLD parcel that you're, you're interested in potential, potentially putting something in by way of...
That's a generator.
We were looking at a small, a distributed generator there, but...
And I think that they were looking at some, at some point combining that with solar, very preliminary, down the road, not necessarily near term right now, because of the value of that land.
Okay, I mean, perhaps we could talk after the meeting for additional update.
I think I need to get the list from Tom of where we are and send it to you, and then...
Tom's provided us the list with the four buildings that I identified, they're four school buildings.
All right, okay.
The Pride Town Administrator was trying to get the board to, right, some sort of initiative, solar farm initiative, which we didn't do at the time.
Right.
So I don't know if any of those are the potential for land as opposed to buildings would be included for the vendors to take a look at.
See, the way, the way the SREC market is structured within the state of Massachusetts, it's actually less advantageous to put it on land than it is either a solar canopy or rooftop, because they value that as a, like a point eight for the, for the value of an SREC. So if an SREC is trading at $200, if it's been placed on a land because they, they don't want to take too much land, you might only get $160 as opposed to 200, and that really impacts the financial viability of that. So that's why we're focusing on rooftops so that it's a win for the, perhaps the town, we can integrate it with the school system, as well as an additional form of revenue.
We may very well have some property which is somewhat of little or no use other than open space.
Okay. Sure, we'd be happy to look at that, include that if it was appropriate.
Yeah, if you want to let Mike know where those are, we can have Tom add it to the list or whatever.
Good thinking, Swan Pond, Steve.
Whatever you want us to look at.
Smith. What, what, what is now referred to, I forget.
Yeah.
And then the other thing is, Bob, I don't know if you were going to ask them about the investments?
Riverwood.
Disposition of those investments, discussion that had taken place previously.
A couple of years ago, we got into a bit of a row with the Reading Light associated with the RITs.
The REX?
The REX.
Rex, yeah.
Yeah, what Jane's talking about, the SREC.
So one of the, at the time, the existing board was ready to let them just expire.
Right.
And my thought was, and I went to the meeting and presented it, it didn't get very far, I don't think, was, well, I, I can understand those that have, you know, really thinking about the environment, saying, well, let them expire, why shouldn't we sell them to somebody so that they get off the hook, right? And I'm saying to myself, but if you sell them to somebody, yeah, they may get off the hook, but you could take that cash and buy lead lighting or some other thing that would help the environment. So, you know, it's a net.
Right, we sold REX last year for over $700,000.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
Okay.
And the only ones that, the only ones that retire are the ones that don't have any value. We, we work with company that, you know, like a, almost like a stockbroker that, that tracks the cost of them, and we sell them.
Okay, so that's a change in position from a couple of years ago.
That was $700,000?
I think that...
With a change in the board, there was a change in the board, right?
Yeah, I think we had a change in the board the next year.
Nope, they're, they're right into lowering your rate.
Very good. Any other questions?
Thank you for your time.
Well, we really thank you for your time and appreciate the information. Can we get a hold of this presentation?
Yes, I got it written down.
And there's going to be some kind of communication maybe with our seniors?
And that can be electronic, by the way.
In our library.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Happy Christmas, everybody, and happy new year.
Happy holidays, Merry Christmas.
Okay, next item on our agenda is discuss the flight policy, Mr. Gilberrino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the Veterans Agent is here. I'd like to thank Susan for, both for being here this evening and for her time, along with the Fire Chief and Julie Spurnight, the two, the new Building Superintendent, to take a look at this policy. So this is a follow-up to a conversation that we had at a board meeting, I believe in September, and it was a direct result of some concern in the community with regard to how we handle issues concerning the flag, specifically the US flag in North Reading. So what we've done here, after quite a bit of discussion and analysis of our current practices and the policy, is offer a recommendation for the board's consideration that would establish a uniform policy that would govern the handling of the US flag in North Reading in general, rather than a policy that's limited just to the flag on the common. And as you should have seen from the memorandum, which was a summary that Susan put together for you, as well as in the draft, policy that we're asking the board to consider this evening is essentially that we would be breaking down flags into three categories, which is the flag here at the Town Hall, the flag on the Town Common, and then all other US flags located on town-owned property. And the intention here is essentially to afford the, what we believe was the intended recognition for individuals active in the community, or who had served the community, by providing them recognition by lowering, continuing to provide recognition by lowering the flag on the Town Common in the appropriate instances, generally upon their passing. But also to make sure that in instances where there is perhaps a gubernatorial or presidential order, that we can afford them the same recognition by scheduling the flag being lowered for a time beyond what has been prescribed by the governor. So I'll just offer briefly, and Susan certainly, I don't know if you want to grab a seat at the table up there where the microphone is, to offer a summary, but we divided into three categories, and we have a proposal here for consideration and discussion with the board. Perhaps, Susan, you could kind of walk everybody through the three categories that we identified and offer when the town, when the flag would be, would be lowered.
Be at half staff?
Sorry, half staff.
No, no, it's okay.
To be clear, thank you.
First, I just want to let everybody know that the reason that we, this was brought up was back in January 3, 2015, there was a, the Governor Devaldo Patrick had, had ordered the flags all at half staff. So right now, the flag policy for the Town Common actually mirrors his policy, where we had added it in. But our concern is, excuse me, our concern is, at this point in time, we had lost six veterans, so between January and March 3, because we could not bring the flags back up until he was interred. So it was literally over two months that we were looking at the flags being at half staff. Understood, totally get it. But his order is based on, specifically on other state-owned or state-controlled buildings, military installations, and the main administration buildings of the public institution, of the Commonwealth, meaning, i.e. the towns and city halls. So like I said, in the process, which I brought in actually, we lost three World War II veterans, two Korean War veterans, and a Vietnam veteran within that, within that timeframe. So what's happening when the flag is at half staff on the, at the Town Hall, as well as the Common, we're not able to recognize these veterans for their service because it's already down at half staff. So that's, that's the biggest issue right there. So what I, after, you know, several, few meetings, we had concluded that the best thing would probably, you know, just, just bring a half-staff notification policy for the whole entire town, you know, to include all, all our flags here. So the Town Hall flag would be the three days to including internment, which is what we have in place right now for the Town Common. We had changed it, it was, at one point it was just sitting town officials, but we made it for former and sitting town officials, along with the state and federal elected officials who have represented the town of North Reading. Current and retired town employees and the town veterans. And the remainder of it stays the same, with the exception we added as ordered by the proclamation of the President of the United States, or Governor of Massachusetts, that's the flag, that's what we have now right in place. So that would satisfy the administration end of the building. What we wanted to change was, where it says is ordered by the proclamation of the President of the United States or the Governor of Massachusetts, we wanted to take out as ordered, excuse me, or Governor of Massachusetts. We want to leave it as ordered by the proclamation of the President of the United States, for the Town Common only, okay? That being, if we have a situation and the Governor calls the flag at half staff, this one's going down, the one on the Common can stay exactly where it is. If I lose a veteran, one of our veterans, or a town official, or a former state, you know, a state or a former state employee, a town employee, excuse me, this flag is already down, now we can lower this, and the people of North Reading will acknowledge the fact that something's happened, it's either the President ordered that, or it's because of somebody in town. And that, we just want to make sure that they get the recognition that they deserve. That's, that's the bottom line. So, in addition, we had, so that would read, for the Town Common, it would read as, as ordered by the proclamation of the President of the United States. In addition, in instances where the order of the Governor of the, of Massachusetts has been issued for line-of-duty deaths, that one we do want to keep for half-staffs with the Governor, because line-of-duty deaths can include, incorporate your state police, your fire, your, your police officers, as well as our veterans, so that, you know, in line of duty. We just want to make sure it's black and white and clear, because it's been, like I said, with, with what happened with Senator Brooke, it was, it went on so long that it was really taken away from everybody here. Not that we were, not saying that he didn't deserve it, but it was here already in the administration building, it, because it mirrored each other, the, the policy on the Common, we weren't able to bring that up to be able to recognize the other six veterans. And in addition, we had incorporated by order the Town Administrator in consultation with the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. Now, in, on the Town Common one, we have three days to including internment. Chief Warnock, and my concern is, we want to make sure that it's clear that should a situation like this arise again, and we're looking at somebody for two, you know, that's passed away in two and a half months before being interned, we don't want to be able to have to put that flag down for that full time, timeframe. We want to be able, it would stay here on the Town Administration Building, but it wouldn't on the Common. So that was our biggest concern. My, he had, had wanted to present more of a, no more than three days to including internment to make sure it was clear. And I'm, and I have, I personally don't have no issue with that. My biggest, my concern is if by order of the Town Administrator, would that satisfy it? That is the biggest, that's, that's probably the most concern I have.
I think that, thank you, Mr. Chairman, so I think that that line was one which, candidly, I resisted in the conversation.
Yeah.
But I think that that's intended to capture the, the instance where something has happened, and is a clear consensus that it didn't fit neatly into what the policy prescribed, but we want to provide the appropriate recognition.
Right.
And as a check and balance, that it wouldn't be just under the authority of the Town Administrator, but that it'd be done in consultation with the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, to ensure that everyone's in agreement as to the approach.
And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe if, if, you know, reading it, and somebody was taking this policy and looking at it, and they said to me, hey, how come that flag's not still at half staff, you know, because, you know, you have, for a perfect example, an elected, a state elected official, again, Senator Brooke, who took care of North Reading, two and a half months. Well, we want to have the, we, we want to recognize him, but we only want, we would only want to do it as we would everybody else, three days to internment on the Common. But we want to make sure that's satisfied, so we don't go through this again. That's the biggest concern we have.
So I think this does clarify the issue that it has occurred, people calling saying, why is the flag at half mast? What I don't understand is that, I understand you being here and participating and making recommendations, what does the Fire Chief have to do with this?
We...
And it's just lack of knowledge.
Sure, sure. So we involve the Fire Chief and the Building Superintendent, because those are the two individuals that are charged with raising and lowering the flags.
Ah.
The Chief tends to the flag on the Town Common, Chief also has a flag at the Public Safety Complex as well.
Okay.
So we tried to include all those...
Sometimes when the chief's flag at the Public Safety Building doesn't match the Town Common...
No, no, I know, that's not the issue, Michael. The issue was, I'm trying to understand how the, how the Fire Chief was involved with this.
That's what we wanted to do, clarify it with everybody, you know.
Yeah, no, I, I fully agree with the, the change this being proposed.
Could I ask, Mr. Chairman, could you just speak to the issue of concurrence as well?
Oh, sure.
Because you tried, I think that's important.
Yes, that's, that is huge. Okay, so in a, in a, in a situation where we're looking at, oh, let me see, where am I here? Yeah, concurrent deaths.
Number seven on the policy, if that helps, Susan.
That's why, I thought we had, we were omitting that one the other week, was that one? No, we weren't. That's me, that's my note, sorry. In the event of concurring events with state and federal orders, the Town Common flag will remain at half staff. However, this is assuming somebody passes away in that timeframe, I'll use a veteran for an example, to allow the flag to make, on the Common, to remain at half staff for an additional 24 hours. That would, which would allow that clearance of recognition, yes, it was a state, or two concurring things, for instance, John Smith from Wayland passed away, and the flags were at half staff, okay? In the meantime, you know, George Jones from North Reading passes away, and the both of their timeframes were ending at the same time. So say it was, what, Wednesday to Friday, we were running, it was running concurrent. We want to be able to keep it till Saturday for the gentleman here.
Mr. Chairman, just a final note, for all other town flags, so to name a few, the Public Safety Complex, Ipsut River Park, for example, where we have flags, those would be lowered upon the order of the proclamation of the President, or again, in that instance where there's a consultation between the Town Administrator and the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. And the reason we put that in is because if you look at the standards that have been established at the state level, and I think at the federal level as well, generally the main administration building, which would be the Town Hall, but there may be instances where something has happened, and I, my memory serves me, I think for, for the attack in Paris, and perhaps for the attack in San Bernardino, the proclamation was issued, it applied to all of our flags.
Mm-hmm.
So we wanted to clean that up and make sure it was clear as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jeff?
The proclamation supersedes all of the requirements that we, that we have, is that what I'm understanding?
The Presidential Proclamation?
Right.
It would, as prescribed here, I believe that it does anyway, to be candid with you.
I'm sorry.
The Presidential Proclamation in terms of...
Supersedes everything.
Supersedes everything.
Correct. See, the Presidential, Presidential, it's, it's everywhere.
Okay, all public...
All public buildings and buildings. Military installations, yes. Actually, I have a, probably have a copy of exactly how this order is.
I believe we provided it with the information you gave us, if I'm not mistaken.
Oh, okay, okay.
We have, are we voting on this as a first reading?
It'd be a first reading, that's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? Mr. O'Leary?
I'm fully embracing what's being suggested here. The only thing that I, I don't know if it needs to be in the policy or not, but as you alluded to, Mr. Chairman, you know, people comment, it's, why is the flag down? You know, why is it at half staff? And I don't have to have, I don't know, you know, I can't answer that question.
No, I, I think it was, I, I think my comment was, it had been at half staff for a long...
No, as far as Senator Brooke, no, but I mean, in general, in general, I get a que, I get questions, you know, how come the flag on the Common's at half staff? And I don't know. So my suggestion is, put it on the website.
May I?
Please.
May I? It does go on the website.
Okay.
I put it on my website, and I also have it posted in three spots here in the town, and it goes-
But, that's a point very well taken, I believe Selectmen Manupella, you may have brought it up.
On the town website?
That it, that it ought to be on, we need to get it on the homepage.
Yeah, the kid, right, yeah. So, put it on the homepage of the website, rather than that.
And, and, and just so you know, I mean, obviously, it's, you know, when I get, when I get the notification that it's coming down from the state level, you know, and literally I had one this weekend, too, it's just do the best you can, literally, as we get, do the best you can, so, I'm at home, boy, I'm sending these, "Do the best you can." So, I'm not always able to get to the website to be able to put it up, but 99% of the time, yes.
So I mean, I don't know if we want to have the policy reflected, it'll be on the front page of the website, town website additionally, as far as recognition?
I would welcome that.
Maybe as a suggestion in the, in the policy, and that way there I can say, "I don't know, I'll let you know, I'll check it out."
So you can check it out?
I think I can check it out, right.
I like that idea. Jeff?
Was there a proclamation for San Bernardino? I didn't-
I believe that there was, but Susan-
Was there?
Unfortunately, we're going through so much, so much of this now-
It's hard to keep up.
It's, it's really hard to keep up, unfortunately. Like I said, the only concern in a, you know, that I have, I just want to make sure that on the, on the town common end of it, that if we get an order, with the exception of the President, an order down, and that we're on, and we are honoring a state or elected official, a state representative, senator, whatever, that's worked with, for North Reading, and this ever happens again, I want to make sure that there's not an issue where we're going to have to keep it at two and a half, to it down for two and a half months-
Right.
-for, for interment. So I, I believe the line that says, "By the order of the town administrator," would be able to resolve that.
Well, I also-
Is that correct? Am I correct?
Yes, although beyond that, three days to and including interment would also be the answer.
Exactly, because it's, it's simple.
In the situation with Senator Brooke, as the thaw came, and it became clear that at some point they would be able to go through with his interment, you know, that it would get announced as a date, and then it would get changed, and so when we have a date, back up three days from there, and the flag would be lowered.
Correct. And the other thing, too, is, if I may, is on, on number two, it's, that one does say, "Date of death to interment," where this one says, it says, "Three days to interment." So, correct me, but I believe or not, took that into the law, it definitely was going to say, it's correct, in, in three days, uh, three days to.
So I don't know, you want to assert it, put that on the line as far as the website?
So someone's capturing these proposed changes for the second reading.
Yeah, that's correct, I, I believe that-
Mike is.
I believe the change is one change, which is to add-
Right.
-that it be posted on the town website, which we'll probably add after the category of other town flags, but we'll modify it and bring it back.
Do we have further discussion on this matter at this point?
I, I could be in the minority on this, and I understand the proposal, but I just think it should be uniform for all of our flags. I think it should, all seven should be for, apply to each of the flags, and I think if it's posted, it's being flown at half-mast concurrently for, you know, this person and this person, that people can be notified of that. And I, I do actually like the idea of an extra day, if it is concurrently running, an extra day for our, you know, service people from the town that have, that have passed away, our service members from the town. But I, I just think it should be uniform, and one flag shouldn't not be at half-mast when the other one is, and-
Yeah, well, where do you draw the line? I mean, the, the federal and state regulations say the administrative building-
Main administration building.
So what we're talking about is to utilize the flag at the common for town-related items and special mandates by the President of the United States or the Governor. So I, I don't see a problem with that.
Oh, I'm not saying it's a problem, I just say that the purpose of it is to honor the person who is deceased, and I think it should be uniform, that's what I'm saying. It's a, you know, it's a gesture to commemorate that person, to honor that person, and to me, logically, it doesn't make sense to not have it uniform, that's all. And I, again, I might be in the minority, but that's my particular perspective on it.
I mean, that, isn't, is that not what we have now?
Well, it looks like your policy is pretty uniform, but it doesn't, something's blackened out here, but it just looks like it applies to-
I think the blacked out was the old-
No, no, I'm talking, I'm not talking about what's being proposed.
That was only the common flag, we had no policy for the other flags.
So it doesn't, it just was for one?
For one flag, that's correct.
So you're making it, making a policy for all of them right now?
That's correct. We, we did our best to try to interpret, interpret what we thought the community might want with regard to how to handle perhaps, you know, the flag here at the town hall. We had guidance from the Governor and the federal level with regard to when that flag should be lowered or not, but at the same time, we didn't have guidance at the local level. I mean, I think, make no mistake, I think all of us would prefer to lower all the flags for all those instances, but at the same time, we, I think there was a concern with regard to resources that might be required to do that, and the practicality of doing that. So we tried to come up with a balance that we thought would reflect what the community wants, taking the guidance from the state in terms of, if you just follow what the state says, and I worked in a community where that's what we did, it was just the main, the main administration building, the town hall. We know clearly there's a desire, there's a connection with the flag on the, on the common, and we wanted to recognize that appropriately. But I, I certainly share, you know, the sentiment, but at the same time, we're trying to balance it in terms of the resources required, the demand required, and keeping up with the requirements.
Honestly, from a personal perspective, I actually feel that it's disrespectful when I know there's an event, or that there's a, someone that the flag is supposed to be flown at half-mast, and I see that either someone has, maybe I looked at it like, oh, they must have forgotten to lower that, or they're not lowering it out of respect for that person. I look at it as a disrespectful thing, but, you know, that's just me personally.
Mr. Ew.
Yeah, if, if I'm gathering this correctly, I think the intent that you have with this proposal is to make sure that everybody is covered, so to speak, that everyone gets recognized. I think the fear is if they use the policy of all flags being lowered to half-staff, and then the numbers, how many people have passed away, they begin to lose their identity. And I think what Sue and Mike are trying to do is to make sure that they are recognized by allocating the common flag, I mean, the flag on the common to cover certain circumstances that would otherwise be missed if they had not done this. Is that a fair assessment?
If I may, all we're, all we're doing is trying to, on the, on the Governor's end. The President's proclamation would be covering all flags, just so you, I'm clear. If you go, if you go to Wilmington, Tewksbury, any of them, their town common on a Governor's order, you're not going to see their flags at, at half-staff either. What happened is they, when they initially did this policy, we weren't at war either at the time, the flag, it was, we were mirroring it, is what we were doing, mirroring, mirroring the Governor's policy.
These don't include the school buildings, just the town buildings, administrative buildings.
School buildings should be, but-
Just make sure it's clear.
That's correct, though, if I may, Mr. Chairman, so the policy is, is the buildings that are within the purview of the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator, we'll certainly provide a copy of the pro, of policy as approved in first reading this evening for advisory reasons. I could tell you that I think we have very good communication with the school department with regard to the handling of the flags, but we'll certainly advise them of the changes that we're proposing.
They, they receive all the half-staff notifications, I do have them on my half-staff. I have actually two separates, if you will. I have one, it's for the town common, and I have one, it's the presidential order. So the presidential order, everybody goes at half-staff, just so nobody gets confused.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Mr. O'Leary?
I don't disagree with Kate in relation to the visibility of the flags around town, the ones that we're talking about. People from the outside town, outside of town, may never venture over in front of the town hall, you know, probably, I don't know what it is, five, 10% of the population may drive by here, well, seventy-six months, I don't know. People from this side of town, unless they're heading over east, they, they never go by the common. So I don't know, I mean, if we're looking to give proper recognition, and again, I don't know what manpower or resources are needed, and what it really takes to do it, it depends on who you're assigning it to, I suppose. I mean, public safety facility, public safety personnel take care of it, and take care of the common. Here, it's the superintendent buildings-
Superintendent buildings, yeah.
Superintendent buildings. Is Triple Park as recreation?
Correct.
What else do we have? Is that it?
The Parish Park.
The Parish Park.
Parish, that's recreation, right.
Parks and Recreation take care of those, and then-
Is it one of Martin's?
The Fire Department's taking care of the one on the common.
Right.
They have the key.
Yeah.
And then, and then Julie takes care of the one at the administration building.
So it's, to Kate's point, I mean, if we're looking to give a full recognition based upon a policy, and who we wish to recognize in addition to whatever the President or the Governor determines.
I didn't interpret as trying to save labor here.
Well, that's what I heard, it's the resources to, to do it.
We don't do them-
That's what I heard.
The ones that we're do, we're not doing them now as it is, the policy, that's not a, in other words-
We're not doing it now because of-
Purely because that's not what the order calls for, it's not what the policy calls for.
We use the town common flag as the centerpiece here.
Flag for doing, right.
Under the policy now?
Yeah.
Today, just the policy applies only to, to the town common.
To the town common.
So, I mean, presidential order, everything goes down.
No.
But other than that, for, for former town officials or people that we wish to recognize as a community, or a local veteran who passes away, it's the town common flag, no other flags. And what's being proposed here is, you know, addressing all the flags at different intervals are going to be utilized. Why wouldn't we want to recognize? I, I don't see it as being a huge-
Me either.
-resource issue. And yet, to Kate's point, you know, if you've got to recognize someone's individual service, recognize it.
If I heard Kate, right, what she's saying is mirror everything, right?
As you lower one, lower them all.
Lower them all, right.
Right.
And the purpose of this change is that because they were mirrored, and because of the Governor asking that it be lowered until the interment of-
Senator Brooke.
Right? It went on forever, and therefore the flag was down-
Right.
-on the common for several weeks.
Pretty much, yeah. Yeah, but I, I think there's a couple of issues. One, one was that particular occurrence, you know, that particular occurrence, and then the incorporation of other town flags along with that, addressing that issue, too, because currently, the, the policy only addressed the flag on the common. And the flag on the common was then at half-staff, at half-staff for a long period of time because of a gubernatorial proclamation. The Presidential proclamation, all the flags go down.
So are we diverging away at this point now? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, no. No, I, I think we're just looking for uniformity as to how the flags are going to be at half-staff and where, whether it be piecemeal or across the board.
I think the only, the only issue comes into play is what Susan had brought up earlier, is if we, we do all flags at all times, you may lose sight of representing or honoring a fallen soldier. If it's already down for somebody that passed away that was a former city board of select member, let's say, you kind of lose sight of the honoring of a fallen soldier. So maybe the solution is, when we have the situation where it's honoring a soldier, that we buy an honoring and remembering flag, because they do have them, in that we post those on the common flag, the common, yeah, we put that with the, when we hold it half-staff, we also have the honoring and remembering flag below it for those, just for those-
Right, but, but see, our, our policy for the town, for the town policy on, on the, excuse me, for the, the common flag, the only issue we're having is we're mirrored with the Governor.
Yes.
So now, when the Governor calls in, we lose a veteran, you know, and actually, and I'm, please, don't take this, we've had, we've lost service members, or, excuse me, veterans that have been, that had served their country for four or five years, and passed away, a, say, motorcycle accident. Right now, the Governor calls, excuse me, the half-staff, we have to put down the half-staff on the common, along with the one at the administration building here. In the meantime, if I lose a World War II veteran while that's down, I have no recognition for the individual. In other words, the, the individual living out of town is getting two flags down, ours isn't even getting one.
Right, and that's why I'm saying we should maybe incorporate the honor and remembering flag for the instances that you're talking about. You add it below the flag, so they bolt at half-mast. That's legal, and you can do that. We just have to invest in the flag.
But I think what you're suggesting, though, is the additional day for the local, local veteran, which is great. I think it's-
That would, well, that would end up coming under, under, say, the President calls up for, you know, for a half-staff, that's all flags. So now, there's a concurrent thing going on. Then, at that point, we would want to extend the 24-hour-
Right.
-for the individual that we lost in town. But the problem is, we're losing a lot of people here in town. We're losing not just veterans, but I mean, we're losing a lot of our, you know, people that have worked even for the senior center, that are supposed to be recognized. We've lost former town employees here that should have been recognized, you know, as well as, you know, your sitting officials, or your, your former sitting officials, they're not going to get recognized by that flag on the common if we keep mirroring the, the Governors. Because there's so much going on between all the mass shootings, and the, the soldiers that we're losing, to whether it's suicide, it doesn't have to be in combat, it doesn't have to be in combat, we're, if they, they call them up, they'll call a half-staff, the Governor will call a half-staff, for anything from somebody dying of cancer, you know, an accident, it's not even, it wasn't even related in, you know, in active duty, he's calling them up, that's fine, but we don't want to mirror it, we want to take care of it on this, on this building, but not mirror it on the common. That, that, the, the flag in the common is an icon to this community, you know, and they look at it as their flag, and it was the people of this community that purchased that flag, and, and that's all we're trying to do, is, is honor the people, and it's so huge up there, it's so magnificent, let me put it that way, is that it's a perfect spot to honor the people, you know, and, and as soon as somebody sees it by itself, and nothing else is down, they're going to know, "Look, it's a, it was somebody in town." Unless they see everybody down, then they're going to know it's a presidential order.
Well, Michael Frisco had an interesting suggestion, because there is a flag, it could be flown below, flag at half-mast, when it's a, someone from the town.
Right. And we can even have something imprinted, actually, below it, there's an area of the stitching they leave you, you, we could put for a fallen soldier of North Readings, you know, whatever words you want. So this would be the flag, so everyone knows, that's what it looks like, but there's also an area below it, they leave you to allow, allow you to put any stitching you want on there.
So you're asking in addition to this, I think that's a great idea.
Well, you only put it up when it's a local soldier, you know, and I think that's maybe help you with your, some people know when they see that, they know it's local.
So in other words, what Michael's saying is if, if we go back and mirror the flags, like apparently we've been doing, and the difference is that when it's a local, we'll flag, and we'll fly below the lowered flag, the in memory of flag.
My only concern with that is, how are we going to acknowledge a state employee? How do we acknowledge a sitting official? It's, it's fine, I-
Well, if it happens at the same time, if it happens at the same time, you, you only fly, you fly this flag in downtown, and the rest at half-mast, with nothing else.
I'm, I'm inquiring about the Governors. If we're mirroring the Governor again, then we're not recognizing-
You know, I don't think we're going to have a solution for every scenario. I think the policy is good as it's written, and I think will help us manage through it soon when we have those issues, but I don't think we can solve them all tonight. I just, you know, we could run them in a bazillion different scenarios, but I think the way it's written now, it gives us the flexibility to deal with those issues when they come up. It gives you the flexibility to work with the town administrator to come up with a solution. But I think if your real serious concern is about really truly recognizing our fallen soldiers, this, I think, gives you-
Oh, that, no, that's a wonderful, I mean, that's a wonderful addition.
Big recognition, it's worthy investment, and if we don't have the money and the funds, I'd be more than happy to purchase the flags, I have no problem doing that, I just think that, that solves it. And then, the policy is written, we can work around any other scenarios that come up.
But that doesn't address-
But that doesn't address all the flags.
No, that, that's, I'm in full agreement. And I, I think if we get this in place, we should have it written that way, that all the flags. And I, and I, I'm hoping the school committee, and I don't see why they wouldn't, the school administration, wouldn't be on board with that as well.
Well, we're not going to get this resolved here tonight.
I think that-
I think we did.
I think there's a consensus of the board.
I think what Mr. O'Leary proposed for the language change and new pally recommended as well, it's perfect.
I do think that there's some-
Mrs. Manapelli, if I, maybe I'm mistaken, but I think what she's saying, she felt that separating it was a bad idea, and that all the flags in town that are part of this are all mirrored. So, if the governor declares something, the town hall flag goes down at half-mast and also the flag on the common. And, and then, you came up with a thought that, well, okay, so the town hall's at half, I mean, the common is at half-mast because of the governor, but if someone, an in-town person had passed away at the same time, wouldn't fly the second flag underneath the half-mast flag.
And, and there was, and it was proposed an extra day if there's a concurrent order for half-mast.
Should we return it?
So it's targeted, what you have in there is giving that extra day of commemorating that North Reading.
You wouldn't need that if, you wouldn't need that if you had the secondary flag under it.
Right.
Correct? I would think.
So, so basically, what Mike has proposed is that when there's somebody from the town, there's essentially two flags at half-mast versus one. And at the town hall, the governor had declared something, the town hall flag would only show the one, where on the town common, there would be two. I mean, that might be a reasonable compromise to get around this whole thing, but-
When, is, is you talking about this mic or that mic are you talking about?
I think this.
He's saying it should be all flags.
Blue mic.
Can I, may I, Mr. Chairman?
All right.
So, blue mic.
Then I mis, totally misunderstood what you-
Am I? No, I think you-
No.
I think it should be uniform, whatever the order is.
I can clarify my thought.
All the town flags should be in there.
I just clarify my thought. It should be all flags, I'm in full agreement with you, all flags. But when we have a fallen soldier that is a local, whether it's a veteran or a local active-duty member, is fallen, anytime, we should, in addition, post that honor and remembering flag with that.
That's great, yeah.
In one place or all?
One place.
No, it would be on the town common.
Yeah, on the town.
That's a great idea.
And then, having the website, if we have two people at the same time, at least they'll know when they go to the website, they can look it up, and they can see that it's honoring two different people at the same time.
Mr. Gilbert.
I'm sorry, I just-
No, 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 go ahead, go ahead.
I was going to attempt to summarize the conversation, so perhaps you should go first.
Okay. For me, it went from a very simple idea to a very complex issue, but, and all for good reason. If, Mike, did I understand that you just said that the secondary flag would go up every time, even if there is, even if the flag is half-staff for that person anyway? Military person, that is. So it comes down half-mast, but that's the only person in town, so we're still going to put the, the remembrance flag up there?
Yes, what you're saying is that when there's a combination of the two, it's recognized that it's somebody in town, where it's only a flag at half-mast that's something outside of town.
Fine. It isn't necessarily, I don't think, Michael Kirk is, it's not necessarily what it's just, if there's simultaneous. It would be for the local, any, any local connection will have the additional flag under it.
Correct. Any local veteran or active-duty member, fallen soldier, no matter when, we would fly the flag at half-mast and include the honor and remember.
Now, we also have as part of the policy, proposed policy and current policy, recognizing former local officials and former town employees.
Right, right.
And you'd have a flag for them to-
So something simultaneous would be there, any proposal, they could have a different flag with different embroidery on that, or what?
I don't know. Or you don't fly, you don't fly-
The veterans.
Yeah, I mean, you obviously don't fly the honor and remembering flag, you know, for that, you just leave the flag at half-mast.
So, to that point, though, there may be, there may be, or at some point, there will be an instance where there's somebody locally who was not a veteran who we want to recognize, the flag will already be at half-staff, we won't have a vehicle to recognize that person based on what I'm understanding the flag protocol is, because I'm not aware of any-
Well, I would suggest that we have a different honoring flag.
Well, I guess that would be my question, I don't know whether the flag protocol allows for that to happen, I kind of looked at the Veterans Agency to tell us.
Yeah, I have to, I have to look, I have to go on there. For the additional flag, I mean-
So if it were for somebody who was not a veteran to be honored locally simultaneously, is there an appropriate flag to go underneath the flag when it's at half-staff?
I have to look and see if there's anything like that.
I wouldn't do it, I would just leave it, the American flag, that's it.
Yeah.
The only time we fly a second flag would be for our local.
Okay, so-
That was, I'm just making my opinion-
Sure, sure, yeah, no, no, I'm just trying to understand, but that would be-
If it's somebody outside of North Reading, no, you don't fly it, it's like-
No, no.
No, I'm talking about somebody locally.
If you have a former town employee, a former elected official passes away, it is not a veteran. Your little secondary flag doesn't necessarily fit, doesn't fit.
I don't see that, right.
You know, is there another flag that's appropriate to fly on a flagpole for former town officials, so to speak, that would be appropriate enough? Again, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't.
That I don't know.
I'd have to look into, A, I'd have to look into that, the other thing I need to check too, to see how that is when we set it up, you know, on, to line it up, are they going to have to take everything down and to re-line it all, you know, to put that back on? I'm not sure, I'd have to, I'd have to look at it.
No, 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 it's very easy. It's just, you just lower the flag at half-mast, you position the other one below it, like you normally do.
Mm-hmm.
It just has to be at a level where it's not hitting the ground or anything, but it's, the flag's very tall, so you're not going to have an issue. It's, you fly the POW flag at half-mast sometimes, as well as the American flag, you see that over, you know, over the memorial days and stuff like that, so it's very easy to do.
All right, summarizing.
I think that we have some homework to do with regards to how to recognize a, somebody who's not a veteran. Now, I mean, I only flag, I only note that issue, pardon the pun, and I only-
Is it a town flag?
No.
What is that?
I don't know what that is.
Do we have a town flag?
That is, that was the recognized town flag, and probably the only one.
It's yellow and that exists, you mean?
I only-
So where, where are we with this?
I think we need to look and determine how, what, what we could afford the board as an opportunity to provide that recognition to somebody who's not a veteran, who has local connection that the community would want to see honored at a simultane, if there's something were to occur simultaneously.
So do we want a table list?
I think we have some work to do before, I would ask for a vote on the first reading.
Okay.
Just to make sure that I'm on the same page as everybody here, we're going, we're looking at right now, the conversation has shifted, that we would lower all flags to half-staff in town, and in the case of a military person from the town, we would have a remembrance flag. So the next question-
On the common only.
On the common only, yes.
Right.
And then, the only question is, what kind of a remembrance flag can we have for an official or an employee, or whatever it is? Is it, get that right?
And also, is it appropriate, is it permissible to, which I think it probably would be, but I mean, definitely, if that were to-
And this has no impact on the extended 24?
So my understanding is that the town administrator is, and with the appropriate people, are going to go back and come back with a proposal that we can vote on based on what they've gone from our discussion tonight, rather than do a first reading.
Right.
That's my suggestion.
I agree.
Okay. I don't think there's anyone left for public comment. Kinder Morgan Tennessee Gas Pipeline update, Mr. You.
Oh, me?
Or Mr. Gilbert?
I'm happy to offer just a note of what was included in the packet. So as the board is aware, we had, thank you, Susan.
Thank you, Susan.
Have a good evening. We solicited impact from private property owners affected by the pipeline route. We have received some, put them in the meeting packet this evening, we received an additional one today, and we did mail a reminder out last week asking interested parties to submit their resident feedback form by Thursday of this week so that we could include it in a packet to be forwarded to Kinder Morgan. Again, for informational purposes only, so that Kinder Morgan would be aware of what we've been told with regard to private property in North Reading. We also included approximately 12 parcels of town-owned land with comments from the town engineer, noting the concern with regard to the impact on the town's property as well, which we'll also intend to forward in that communication at the end of the week, planning to mail that on Friday, and that's based on the feedback that we got from Kinder Morgan.
How feasible would it be to organize a Boyd field trip to tour the entire route?
There are portions of it that are accessible from neighborhoods or town-owned land. There are portions that are not readily accessible just because of the nature of what's there, whether it's a meadow or otherwise, but I would suspect that we could get, get at a good chunk of it. It would take some time, I mean, bisects the entire town, obviously, but certainly not infeasible.
Mm-hmm.
The weather and the snow on the ground also a determining factor.
Right, well, I'm thinking that, you know, as part of our overall plan on, what, making sure that all the people that are impacted understand and are involved, and for us to get a little bit of perspective, sometimes you get better from visiting the area than looking at the map.
Well, the feedback forms that you provide are good.
Especially, especially those town-owned properties, and then, maybe some other areas that might be wetlands that may not necessarily be town-owned, but would be of concern in terms of how we position ourselves, and just a thought, now, looking for some input from the board.
Again, just off the top of my head, Mr. Chairman, one concern I would have is the issue of permission. I mean, some of the parcels are owned by National Grid, some of them are owned by private property owners. Again, approximately 12 of them are owned by the town. Many of those 12 we can get to, but not necessarily all of them, without having to go on private property.
Okay.
So that would be an option, that'd be a bit, just something we need to be paying attention to. I wouldn't want to offer a presumption that we could cross somebody's property to get to our own property without that permission. I mean, we may have an easement in some cases, but not in all.
But I think that if we, if we had an opportunity to look at town-owned properties, that would give us a pretty good idea of what may need to be done, or what Kinder, Kinder Morgan may be looking at doing. You know, I don't know if we need to go to, on private property or-
I was reading some of the comments that came back from the meeting that you had with the homeowners, and, you know, someone talked about, well, it may interfere with my swimming pool, or a well, or future plans to put a garage, and I'm just thinking from the point of view of the town-owned land, it might be worthwhile for us to gain appreciation of how that might be impactful.
Very good suggestion. The, are you finished?
I was going to note the status of the application, but if you want to come back.
Yeah, I was, that's it.
I just have a quick question, as far as the, they have not proposed a physical location under those easements as far as, you know, I'm thinking like Damon Street, you know, is it, does it have to go on the homeowner's side of the easement? Or can it go, do they propose to put it on the other side of that easement, away from those, uh, Damon Street homes?
I would, I would think that they, they, my estimation, I've thought, I've often thought about that, too. They're talking about either going to the side of it, so I've often thought that, you know, they don't, they don't have to go on the properties, the owner's properties, I would think, they don't have to. They may be choosing that, and I-
My guess is there's some sort of impact as far as how far they have to be from directly under those.
That's right, that's right, so they can go this side or that side, is what you're saying.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I don't know if they'd actually offer a proposal yet as to which way they're going, so that-
I think part of that-
Not that there's any impact of it, the impact is certainly more severe in one proposal than another.
Right.
In some instances.
Well, you know, that's the, the whole issue of them wanting to go on and survey, I would guess, so they could determine the best location.
In some instances.
So, you know, if you're going down the power lines and you decide you're going to be on the left-hand side, right, and maybe it's possible based on, to run under the power lines and switch to the other side where it's appropriate, right?
Well, I'm sure that they have to determine when they can cross those power lines and, and, you know, and that might be, that might be like on 28, that might be on 28, is where they might be, something like that.
Because some of the unanswered questions, as far as, you know, how are people really going to be impacted here? I mean, whether it's 50 feet this way or that way, these people are still going to be impacted by having this thing, you know, against their property, I'd be right behind that, oh, but as far as the physical impact on-
But there's two kinds of impact.
What's that?
There's two kinds of impact, right? One is the impact of, well, the gas line is, on my land is so close to it, it's going to impact the value of my property, and the other is, it's in a spot where it's going to impact my ability to utilize my property, right?
And people don't have, any idea yet?
No, they don't, because you, you look at the map that they proposed to Berg, right?
How many, how many properties are there? Forty-four?
Uh, no, there's 44 in total.
In total, and included in the town.
Yes.
That's a little map.
Yeah.
No, so, I mean, that's all, I just, you know, at this point of the game here, they must have an idea, with or without the survey, they have an idea as to this side or that side, and-
They should be impressed upon them to share that information. Of course, you don't go back and say, unless you let me survey, it's not going to happen.
They do, they've given, and we presented that route at the property owners workshop, where they've shown, they have the right-of-way, which is largely owned by National Grid, but there are select areas where there's, you know, individual homeownership that National Grid has an easement through, and they've delineated where the, the utility wires are, where the pipeline would be, and which side of the, of the power lines it would be on, and it does crisscross.
Right.
One place that comes to mind is right at Main Street, I know there's a crossing there.
Right, right, that's what I was thinking.
We were trying to figure out. So they have noted it that way, again, you know, how it may change, or whether another option is more viable, you know, I don't, I don't know, and they've not communicated that with us, but they have delineated it.
Okay.
Can I just ask before you go, so of the parcels, you've got just, from what's in the pack, there were only three people that-
And we got one more today.
Or four out of all of those properties that really have a concern, basically?
Well, we think that the friendly reminder notice last week would probably generate additional feedback.
Keep in mind, Kate, those are, how many out of the total were here?
There were 14 people, but it was probably eight parcels or nine parcels that were represented at the property workshop.
Just doesn't seem like that many in terms of-
Well, we had well over 100 people here.
That's what I mean, it seemed like there was a lot more concern at the Disaster Learning Lab public meeting than-
Well, also, the meeting here, the initial meeting, we had like well over 100 people at the meeting, you know, at that time, but, but since then, the feedback has been-
Could it be that some people interpreted the workshop as an encouragement to go forward and support the project?
No, no, no.
I don't think so, it wasn't presented that way.
It wasn't presented that way at all.
I'm not talking about that night, I'm talking about the invitation.
No, no, but even the invitation didn't present it as that way, it was just information sharing.
Yeah.
And then, I think that, you know, these, have we, do we have our own internal study of, are these utility corridors what we might need for future use for our infrastructure? I mean, have we considered that? I noticed the explanations in the, I guess, objection forms or the feedback forms for the town parcels, but was that a consideration in terms of drawing these up? the town parcels, but was that a consideration in terms of drawing these up? Do we have a consideration of what we might need to use in the future?
You mean, you're talking about our property?
Yes, yeah.
That was not a consideration with the town engineer.
No.
Because I think that might need to be added to that, if, you know, just in case we're.
We can review the workflows.
Well, it would be precluded from that, I would think, if this is permitted to go through our land that we might need to utilize for those purposes in the future, because it's gone to us, it's lost to us, right, all the pipeline is.
At least a portion of it would be. Yeah. Also, as of four twenty-three PM today, I had not seen any approval by FERC have a non-decision, a copy of the non-decision.
I wouldn't expect FERC making any approvals.
Oh, for the application.
Oh, the application, okay.
I'm sorry, for the application, and so we won't really know until tomorrow, is that what?
Well, I believe, I believe, you know, from what I saw, that FERC has accepted the application. What we don't, what we've not seen is the official communication that the invitation to become an intervenor is open. That's what we're awaiting, we expect to happen tomorrow.
And we won't know that until tomorrow, so it'd have to be in the federal registry.
Correct.
That's where we'll have to find it.
There's paperwork to fill out to become an intervenor, I would assume, right?
Yes.
And we have that application, yeah?
I sent, I sent an email to everybody, I copied everybody in, but I sent it directly to the residents who were directly impacted, and, excuse me, I seem to be losing my voice, so I apologize, and in there were two examples of how to be an intervenor, what to include content-wise, and so on, so I gave two examples, one was a town example, but they can adjust it to their own personal need. It was also a good reference for us, for us to look at and see what our approach would be.
When did you send that, 'cause I don't recall.
I sent that earlier today.
Earlier today, okay.
Earlier today, pretty much after the.
I haven't done my email catcher for the day yet.
So, now, another thing, I spoke to Mike about this, you know, we did a wonderful service for the residents who were impacted by the pipeline, but I'd also like to get a feel from the community, what the community feels about it. I saw my first sign that said, you know, build the pipeline here in North Reading. It was here in North Reading, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Home District.
Okay.
Was it on the pipeline route?
Right, so that was there, and, but we've never reached out to get a consensus of what the community in itself, how the community itself feels. Now, people have approached me and said they're for it, so I think that we need to gather information, find out if people are for it, against it, or not sure, these are two questions that I really have, and then what their knowledge base is, are they very knowledgeable about it, somewhat, or not knowledgeable about it at all? So I'd like to be able to perhaps utilize Survey Monkey, with the town, it's not a very expensive surveying piece of software.
So you wanna do a survey, but not let the pipeline people do, and I just, I'm funny.
Yeah, but I think, you know, I mean, I see my role, I haven't taken a stand either way as far as the pipeline has been going, because I'm in a process of absorbing and learning and understanding, because I feel that that's my role as a selectman, is, I know we're responsible for making decisions, that, I don't have a problem with that, but I think that if the community itself has a perspective, we need to reach out and find out what that perspective is, and doing a survey, a town-wide survey on this issue would help the board come to its decision and justify its decision.
Okay, so what I know about Survey Monkey is generally you invite people to take the survey via an email that you sent to them. I guess the other approach is that we advertise on the website, or put in the paper some link that they can go to, to correspond, but the best approach, obviously, is to get a direct email. We don't have the email addresses of, at least I don't think we do with everybody in town. So, I don't disagree with, that might be a reasonable approach, but I think getting to everybody is still difficult. We talk about this almost every meeting now, right? How many people are here?
Do you think there's a way to put it on the website where you could invite that sort of public comment about it?
Well, you can put a link on the website to get to Survey, you know, if you set up a survey with a bunch of questions, you can do that.
Yeah, like Jeff's talking about.
I think that's what we would do, I mean, probably feature.
Yeah, instead of having a direct email everyone, that you would just invite them to, I mean, people do read the transcript, so maybe, you know, that could be in the transcript.
I don't know, Michael.
So, what is the goal, or what are you trying to achieve in the survey?
Well, I mean, I think what Jeff is leading to is that we represent the entire community, and, you know, the people that have our ear right now, the people that are being impacted the most by it, right? So I think what he's saying is, well, how do everyone else think? And if I'm representing the entire community, I'd like to know what that, how other people think about the pipeline.
And I have no idea how such numbers would fall, I'll be quite frank with you, but however they fall, it's information that we could use to help make our decision. I would not want to be in a position to, even with all the information that I have, to go against a significant majority of the community, because I never asked them, but I did my work and I thought it was, you know, best for the town, and I still might stick with that decision even if there was a majority, but I think that you need to take that into consideration as part of your analysis to give an appropriate answer, at least response to all in the community.
Here's Michael.
I like the workshop idea, I just think it's fantastic when you can get people together and give you that exchange, I mean, if you think the survey is where they're doing.
Well, the question is, well, so here's the issue there, is the issue is that we invited everybody that was impacted by where we think the pipeline is going, where we're told is going, and we had a small percentage of the total come to that meeting, right? Now, you're saying, okay, we wanna open up and invite the entire town, which is okay, I don't know whether we need to fill the auditorium up, or we fill this room up, or we have nobody show up.
Well, I think, I.
So, Jeff's proposal of providing the community with an opportunity to, and because of modern technology, you can do this pretty easily today, is to get some kind of a consensus of what people are thinking, we have a better chance of collecting some information than we do inviting people to a meeting. Everybody seems to be busy, the pipeline's not impacting them directly, and, you know, until they start digging up on their street, they're not paying attention, we know that. We know that from the attendance on our meetings, it's a shame, but it's a fact.
And it's important that we do reach out to them, if, to, by putting this survey out, it reaches out to them.
I would prefer to have, to be able to say to someone that comes to me two years from now and saying, why did, you know, why did this pipeline go through, why didn't you fight for it, and, you know, and be able to say, look, you know, we did an outreach of, to everybody, and tried to get some more support one way or another, get a sense of where people are, and no one responded, you know, it's like, you know, why didn't you come to town meeting and vote, now you call me later and complain about something, that kind of thing. Mr. O'Leary.
I'm not necessarily looking for any cover or any, and I don't even know if we're ever gonna get a consensus of the community as a whole as to, you know, where they stand on this particular issue. I don't, to me, you know, whether or not there's a need for this pipeline, and the size it's going to be, is gonna be determined by another party, it's, my objection is the route. My objection is the way that they're not just traversing the town of North Reading, but other communities, when it appears as though that this private enterprise is taking the most expeditious and least costly route for themselves, and the impact on these communities is substantial, and to me, it's the route, and there are better routes that are less invasive to communities and neighborhoods that can be taken at an additional cost, which are gonna be paid for over decades by this profit-making entity here, and passed on to us anyway. To me, they're gonna be reaping the benefits for, as I said, decades and decades and decades, and billions of dollars worth of profits that they're gonna be generating from this thing here. They should be doing something which is gonna have the least amount of environmental impact and impact on communities and neighborhoods, and that's what they're not doing, and that's what I'm objecting to, you know? Is there a need for natural gas? Sure there is. How much? I have no idea, I mean, I could do all the research in the world, and I'm gonna read both sides of the argument, and, you know, they're gonna sell it overseas, whatever they're gonna do with it. My guess is that there's gonna be expansion of these gas lines anyway at some point in time. To me, it shouldn't be the least cost of, to this private entity at the expense of communities and neighborhoods, so that's what I'm objecting to here, you know? It's not whether we need the gas or not, need the gas, whether they're gonna make billions of dollars or not, it's, you know, how are they getting to the answer they're trying to need, and who are they impacting, and how are they impacting, and, you know, they're running roughshod over us, they have an advantage of, you know, lots of money behind them, and it, you know, it's divide and conquer, we're trying to form a coalition, we formed a coalition with other communities, I think we're sending the same message here, you know, although it's getting blurred now because, you know, we need it or we don't need it, you know, we don't want it, you know, we don't want the pipeline and the route that's being proposed because of the impact on the community and the neighborhoods in the community, and that's my position on it, you know? Whether or not there is a need there, of course, the market is gonna determine that, and the government's gonna determine that. So, to me, they're taking the least costly approach for themselves and impacting everybody else, and that's what's wrong. You know, to me, there are other routes that have been proposed and talked about that should have been considered and should be considered more strongly than what's being considered right now, and to me, that's the message, if this community's gonna get together on, it's, you know, forget the whole argument about whether it's needed, not needed, my guess is it's coming in some fashion or form, it's just a question of where's it gonna be located, and should it be located within the proposals they're putting forth? Did Mike, I came to this conclusion a long time ago, no.
But that's a different discussion than what I'm asking. I mean, I understand your point, and I don't disagree with them necessarily, all right? But that's not what I'm asking right now, I'm just simply asking is that you have an opinion, all right, but there are fourteen thousand voters in this town that may have an opinion, all right, and would like to voice it, and this would be an opportunity to hear what their feelings are. I mean, we know information that perhaps other people don't know, and again, I accept all your points, all right, but that's not, that's not what I'm asking right now, I'm asking that we have input, an opportunity, or create an opportunity for the community to give input as to what they feel about the pipeline. Honestly, I mean, it.
They feel in relation to its location, whether it should go in at all, or whether it should be, I mean, what is it you're looking to ask?
No, go in at all, we can argue about the location.
If we went down, Steve, if we went down the route of doing a survey, we'd have to carefully think out the questions we're gonna ask, right?
And I just think.
I mean, the point you're making is just that.
And what I'm proposing is, it is not necessarily a NIMBY, not in my backyard, you know, it's gonna go in somebody's backyard, I'm not necessarily looking to push it into somebody else's backyard, but there are less intrusive routes that could be proposed and put in, that would have less of an impact on neighborhoods, communities, and individual homeowners, and sensitive areas, environmentally sensitive areas than what's been proposed. Yes, is it more costly? Absolutely, but you know, those costs are gonna be spread over long periods of time.
Kate.
And I understand your perspective, but I still don't, I have actually mentioned this before, and it's the same issue for me, not in my backyard, in the backyard I used to have, we couldn't build an extra room because it was an aquifer district, and this is going right through the aquifer district, we have legitimate environmental concerns that we know, we're supposed to be representing those, that aren't included in this, why aren't we getting these, this information? How is it gonna affect us on this townland? Why aren't our own town officials telling us that? Have we done these studies? Have we looked at, here's the proposed route, are we gonna need this land for something in the future? Are we doing what we're supposed to be doing to preserve environmental concerns that, you know, regular, ordinary residents, they're precluded from doing things in their own backyard because of aquifer district, or environmental district, or conservation, or wetlands? Our own people are being prevented from doing that, and I'm just saying that, we already know that, but I would want more to be done by our own officials looking into this, do we need that? What's on our land? What easements are over our land? What do we need in the future for infrastructure in the future, if we're gonna be, you know, trying to build up, you know, commercial corridor or what have you? We need that, too, and I agree with you, I haven't heard anyone in favor of it, I've seen the one gentleman sigh, but everybody that I've spoken with who knows that I'm sitting here is not in favor of it for other concerns, some of them, it being not in my backyard, and concerns of safety, and the things that they're reading about it, but I'm just thinking, generally speaking, there's conservation concerns, environmental concerns where it's being proposed, that we already, either if we don't have the information, we should get it, and I think a walkthrough is a great idea, whatever we can get to build it, but I'm saying that the survey is a great idea, but four hundred voters showed up for the last, of the fourteen thousand, and we have to take every piece of information that we.
Four hundred voters?
Four hundred voters showed up for the last election, right?
Oh, oh, oh.
Out of the fourteen thousand residents.
Yeah, we weren't a big draw.
No.
No.
Your family and mine, basically, and our neighbors, but I'm just saying, five of the mom friend of little's close showed up at the last.
So, so we can wrap this up, because we're not gonna solve this problem here on our own, we're still waiting to hear confirmation, and then, we've already voted to become an intervenor?
Yes.
And there's some paper or form that has to be filed?
Yeah.
It has to be signed by the TA or by the chairman, or?
The board authorized the town administrator to file.
Board authorized, okay.
I will tell you that based on the timing and the way it falls, because we have an opportunity to have a review by the board's selectmen as a whole at the December twenty-first meeting, I'm likely to forward the draft to the board for its final review before it gets filed, because it looks like the calendar will allow for that to happen, and then we'll file it the next day.
And then why don't everybody give a little thought, you know, based on our discussion tonight as to whether or not we wanna run a survey, and what subject matter should, what kind of questions should be on the survey or not, or do we wanna have another public meeting, you know, workshop, and see where it goes? I mean, I think there's still a long, oh, I agree with you, Steve, is there are better routes?
Yeah.
More expensive routes, and, you know, why not? How do we get that changed? That's not the proposal they made to FERC, and I don't know how you go about making that change, but I guess.
I don't know, FERC can't change the route.
What? FERC can change the route.
FERC can change the route, and, you know, I don't care what costs are being incurred by Kinder Morgan or anybody else, that's the pipeline, that's gonna be passed on over years, and.
And I think we're all gonna agree with that, I mean.
Okay, so, I mean, to me, that's the, that's the biggest argument, and maybe the best argument we have, you know, as far as whether or not, you know, you need a thirty-two or twenty-inch pipeline, you get the pipeline, you know?
Well, I think, you know, there is a better route, and Kate's point that the proposed route has some things, forgetting about not in my backyard, that have impact on the environment, there's safety issues and things like that, and I think that's the ammunition that you have to present to FERC to get them to think about a different route. All right, we have license renewals, a whole slew of them.
Yes, a lot.
And some signatures that are required, and that would wrap up our meeting, so the hour is getting late.
Yeah. Now, when you say.
Excuse me for a minute, will you keep me?
Yes.
Will you approve them all?
Should I?
I second that.
Yes, continue, yep.
I move to renew the following common virtual license to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and... I move to renew the following common victual license to expire December 31st, 2016, subject to all regulatory department requirements. China Cuisine, Dunkin' Donuts, Shawna LLC, Dunkin' Donuts, Holy Donuts, Ginger Gourmet, Papaginos, Rye's Store, The Lobster Claw, Joe Fish Seafood Restaurant, and Great American Tavern.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Minnie Pele, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
One absence.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following common victual or all alcohol licenses to expire December 31st, 2016, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Ginger Gourmet Restaurant, China Cuisine, Joe Fish Seafood Restaurant, Great American Tavern.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? None heard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And one absent.
I move to renew the following package store all alcohol licenses to expire December 31st, 2016, subject to all regulatory department requirements. East Gate Liquors.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? None heard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Four, one absent.
And I move to renew the following package store, store wine and malt beverages licenses to expire December 31st, 2016, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Rye's Store, Convenience, plus Christopher's Market.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? And I have a question. Don't mean to pick on this particular motion, but did we have any license applications that you didn't get back that were supposed to be included in this? There were some.
Yes.
So you've sent the first notice and a second notice, and you still didn't get a reply back?
Right.
Do you have a rough number of how many that is?
In the whole package?
Yeah, just in the whole thing. And I know there's a few here that are missing.
Twelve to 14, maybe?
So, I bring it up now only because I know there's a few here that we, I think we had the same issue last year. And this is the thing that kind of gets me a little disappointed every year. The effort and the time that we have to go through to keep sending these notices, and they're, I think you actually send a certified letter now? Is that the next step?
We just did that last week.
Just did that. Again, it's all expense, it's labor and expense. And is there any, Mr. Gilburro, in your experience, is there any way to fix this problem? Because it just seems like it's a lot of work for us to grant a license that they're privileged to have, not guaranteed to have.
From my perspective, we establish deadlines. We tell people that if, that the board's meeting is December 21st, and that they need to have the documentation to us in advance of the publishing of the agenda. If they don't do that, then they run the risk of not being able to be renewed. I think the leverage, so to speak, is when something comes in after the deadline to simply not forward it to the board, not have it be considered. The challenge with that, obviously, is the next consideration would be a meeting in January. Depending upon the meeting schedule, it could be January 4th, it could be January 11th. So, that's the leverage, basically, the board not consider it.
Kate.
They're actually, it's, it's actually required to be due back by November 30th, and their license doesn't get renewed, they have to turn it back in and file for a new license that the board sets up after they publish notice and everything else. So they have to, if they don't follow the renewal process, they actually have to apply for a license as always.
The worst-case scenario would be that when their license expired at the end of the year and it hadn't been renewed, that they can't operate whatever they've got a license for until it gets renewed. Then again, do you-
So that's after the end of the year?
They get, they have the end of the year on the license, and then that's it, they didn't renew it. So if they want to sell alcohol, they have to come back and reapply, like it's a new license application. But who's-
That's pretty harsh.
It's a lot.
I know, we've never taken that approach.
Who, who didn't file their application?
So, you're, you're bringing up the point is the license expires.
Yeah.
That's interesting.
It will, if they-
I would think someone with an alcohol license wouldn't want to do that.
We've had, where somebody wasn't allowed to open on January 1st.
Yeah.
Well, they could still sell food, they just can't sell alcohol.
Michael, did we pass the-
We're up to the, we have a motion and a second for the package store wine and malt beverage motion. So, I was just ready to take a vote, so I could turn it back over to you. So we have a second, we have a motion and a second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion is?
No, just that I, you know, we went through this last year. Jane and Michael Staff, they go through so much effort to get this done, and I just wish they would accommodate us a little bit more by not coming in in the last meeting in the last minute. And then last year, we actually had to have, I think we had to add a meeting in a few cases, and I don't want to see that this year. I just want the message to get out that get it done by December 21st, because that's our last meeting.
If you don't have it done, then, then your license expires, and you'll have to file for a new application.
See, and I didn't know that, so this is, now I know. Good. Now, I'm going to vote in favor of this.
Okay. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Any unanimous?
Thank you for your time.
But I, I think if that's what we're going to do, we should communicate that rather quickly, that it's the board's intention to allow those licenses, you will allow their license to expire, and you're going to have to file a new application, a public hearing, public hearing, and you're going to be shut down for two months.
You could, you could still sell food, but you'd have, you'd have to turn your license in.
We have had instances where it's just simply been a business with a common victual license that's not filed to renew, but it was a business that would want to open on January 1st. And, I mean, I think to that point, Slough and O'Leary, what we could do is if we haven't received the information back come Friday this week, we'll issue a notice to go out in the mail on Friday that will state that stop received by the deadline for the packet, it won't be considered. And what generally happens is it shows up here, but it's generally like Monday afternoon at 3:30. And the new application, and a new application, and a public hearing will have to be scheduled and filed for, and then it will be shut down.
Can we charge a fee?
Does your, yeah, you charge the new license.
Right, the new license fee.
Does your, you, the deadline under the AVCC advise is November 30th, though. Did you get, you give it more time than that?
No, we, we gave them notice earlier, November 31st.
I think we asked it to be returned November 23rd.
Yeah.
And we're still waiting for some.
Some people haven't even made appointments yet, I think.
Wow.
Next?
Yeah.
Next?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the following Sunday entertainment license to expire December 31st, 2016, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Great American Tavern.
Second. Second by Mr. Yule. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, I, I move to renew the following Class I licenses to expire January 1st, 2017, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Bobcat of Boston, Inc., and North Reading Subaru.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to record to show that I will not be participating in the discussion. I will be abstaining on the vote, as I have a family member who holds a Class II license, which will also be up for consideration this evening. Class I licenses also automatically are allowed to sell used vehicles, which is a Class II, so therefore, I will not be participating in the discussion or voting on the matter of abstaining.
One please.
Okay, so on the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Prisco. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining?
Aye.
Did someone not sign these two?
Me.
She hasn't signed it.
She's doing all the work, so.
Okay, all right, no problem.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following Class II licenses to expire January 1st, 2017, subject to all regulatory department requirements. PNT Auto Sales, A&amp;J Motors, Inc., Route T-28 Motors Exchange.
Second.
Is that the typo? Route, I, Route 28, you know, Route 28 Motors Exchange.
Do I hear a second?
I seconded it.
Second by Mr. Yule. Any discussion?
Once again, Mr. Chairman, I will be abstaining.
Okay. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, you want me to keep going with these motions?
Yes, sure.
Mr. Chairman, I move to reappoint Barbara Stats as the State Ethics Commission.
I believe there's one more renewal for automatic amusement licenses.
What?
There should be one more renewal for automatic amusement devices, I believe, in the packet.
Yeah, Papaginos?
Yes.
If you don't have it, I have it right here. You can just read it off of it.
Yeah, is it connected to what I just-
Oh, maybe it's stuck on one of the, yeah.
Would that be?
Papaginos, right here.
All right.
Just about ready to start.
Yeah, you take this one, Greg. Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following automatic amusement device license to expire December 31st, 2016, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Papaginos.
Second by Mr. O'Leary. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any unanimous?
Mr. Chairman? May I offer a comment just with regard to licensing fees, particularly for civil fingerprinting? This was an issue that some of the board members may remember came up last year. We have a bylaw that provides for civil fingerprinting for a series of licenses issued on an annual basis by the Board of Selectmen. There's also an approved policy which calls for the review of the fingerprinting for those license holders on an annual basis, which requires both the assessment of a $30 charge for processing the state, the review of the fingerprinting, as well as a corresponding $70 charge from the town of Reading to cover the town's end of the exchange. I know it was a concern for some business owners during the renewal last year, and I think we've heard a bit of feedback with regard to that expense this year. So in consultation with the police chief, there's certainly no recommendation to deviate from the approach of going through the review of civil fingerprinting for renewals on an annual basis, but that I intend to ask the board at the next meeting to amend its policy and to allow for the $70 portion of the fee charged by the town to be waived for a renewal in which there's no change in the licensee. I bring that up now because we do have some individuals who have not yet paid, and we have some that we would be looking to issue a refund for, but I'd like to get a consensus from the board that the board would support this. Again, I have discussed it with the police chief. We did get some negative feedback. There's nothing we can do about the $30 fee. It's a real expense to the town, and it's required to be submitted to the state, but the $70 portion is something that we believe the town could waive. Again, only for a renewal in which there's no change in licensee.
Mr. Prisco.
I would support that with one condition, that they submit within the deadline that's being requested in the letters that they're-
There you go.
Fair enough. We would implement accordingly, then, with regard to those who submitted prior to the deadline.
Any other comments on the town administrators? No? Okay.
Thank you. And again, we'll have a written policy to codify that at the next meeting.
I don't think so.
No, we have some law.
Appointments next?
Um, just appointments now, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I move to reappoint Barbara Stats as a State Ethics Commission liaison for a term to expire on December 31st, 2016.
Second. Second by Mr. O'Leary?
No.
Oh, Mr. Yule.
Yes, sorry. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
One of us to bench Phil, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move to reappoint Mary Ann Mackey.
McKay.
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 McKay, as Town Treasurer for a term to expire on December 31st, 2016.
Second. Second by Mr. Yule.
Yes.
Covers up his mouth. Any discussion? Now, Kate, you understand that Mary Ann McKay has two jobs. The treasurer is appointed by the Board of Selectmen, and the collector is appointed by the town administrator. And we're voting just on the treasurer.
Are you going to appoint her as the-
Yes. Sorry.
We have a motion and a second.
Mary Ann, don't read anything in the silence.
Motion and a second. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, I move to place in nomination the following name for appointment as a member of the Fourth of July Committee for an indefinite term. Philip J. De Prima, 6 James Mellon Road.
Second.
Think they can use all the help they can get. Do I hear a second from Mr. Yule again?
My mouth was covered.
Any discussion? Anybody know this gentleman?
Thank you for stepping forward.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous? Can we wrap up our appointments?
No.
We have a supplemental as well.
What?
Should have been supplemental motion on your desks this evening.
Yeah.
You didn't?
Oh, it's in Dropbox, I'm sorry. So, it's a separate file in Dropbox.
Did it slips for Kate to sign?
Is it for reappointments or is it...
Yeah, I have my name on it, so I'm gonna do it.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we have another motion, Michael?
Yeah.
We do, yes. I have a hard copy of it, if some of you would like it.
Are you talking about the Commission on Disabilities?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, I have it right in front of me.
Great.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move to place in nomination the following names for reappointment as members of the Commission on Disabilities for a term to expire December 31, 2018. Margaret Robertson, 374 Park Street, incumbent. George Russo, 333 Park Street, incumbent. Joseph Vino, 11 Rock Street, incumbent. And to appoint the following to fill an unexpired term through December 31, 2016, Michael Skinnell, 44 Bowles Road. He would be listed as new.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Leary? Any discussion?
Yeah.
Just explain the unexpired term through December.
Well, what happened, it just lapsed, and for whatever reason, it was, his term was not renewed. And it was a surprise to him.
So, the words "unexpired," I guess that's got me confused.
Not in other words. There's a term of office, and it hasn't been filled for a year.
Right.
Hasn't been filled for a year. Because we never took action out of it.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, it's an unexpired term.
Okay, so he's been there, but he just hasn't taken action.
Yeah, he's been there.
Somehow, the appointment never came forward. He never refiled the paperwork.
All right, got it.
I have no idea. I have no idea.
I get it now.
He's been on there for a while.
But he's been on there for a long time.
So, on the motion.
Second.
No, it's already second by O'Leary.
Mr. O'Leary. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous?
Do you have another one?
Do we have anything else, Michael?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move to place in nomination the following names for reappointments as members of the Veterans Committee for a term to expire, for a term to expire on December 31, 2018.
Second.
Alberto De Salvo, 13 Sullivan Road, incumbent. Neil Rooney III, 13 Pomeroy Road, incumbent. I guess that... It's a three-year term, okay. Do I hear a second?
Michael says it.
Second.
Second by Mr. Prisco.
He said it before I was finished. I just had to be...
Oh, I heard that. There was a hesitation there.
Any discussion?
Any discussion.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Is that it, right? And that's it, correct, Michael?
For appointments, yes.
Now, reappointments? Reappointments?
We already did them.
No reappointments?
No.
What do you have, the slips?
Oh, I'm so, I just, you just did those. I'm sorry. Okay.
Sign the slips. Sign the slips with the good...
I guess I have to sign.
So, you have to sign those slips?
Yeah.
Yeah, I got it. I got it. I'm sorry.
All right. Town, are we through with appointments?
We are.
Licenses? Town Administrator's report?
I believe there's another agenda item, too, actually.
Where are they?
Second page of the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I don't have a second page. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I grabbed the...
You have it, too.
That's all right. I have it here.
I got it here. We're good. We're all set.
I was using the paper agenda, so I didn't have to keep going back and forth.
So, it's the 2017 budget objectives?
Yeah.
I had asked for this to be on here.
Right.
It's okay, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
And I'll just be very brief. There's just, as I was going through this, going into the budget year, budgets cycle. I was looking at a couple of the objectives, and so I was looking at the affordable housing, senior housing, and transportation. And I was giving those some thought. So, I went over and I met with Danielle McKnight, because I think some of this falls under her scope and responsibility. And we had some lengthy discussion about it. And she agreed that there was definitely some studies and plans that are out there that she could go ahead and take the effort on to research it and bring a plan back to the Board. So, I went to the CPC meeting and presented to them to see if they'd be willing to allow her to do that. And there is a cost associated with some of these plans. And one of the things she had recommended was a thing called the Housing Production Plan. And she's working with MAPC, actually, to see if we'd get a grant for it. But I think the plan's important for her to go off and do the research and create that housing production plan. It's about $20,000. So, I went to CPC. They were in favor of doing it. And before she goes off and does the effort, I wanted to bring it here before the Board to make sure that you would be interested in seeing something like that in her budget. And give her an opportunity to come present what's in this housing production plan, what we would get from it, and how it may help us achieve that objective for affordable housing. And for another $5,000, she believes the plan could capture some opportunities for senior housing and assistant living as well.
To be clear, this is for the fiscal 2017 budget. And I believe when you and I spoke, you just wanted to kind of get a sense of where the Board might be. So, as we move down the budget process, we allocate in the budget, we know that we have a commitment of those funds.
Correct. But Danielle and I would take the effort to go out and try to seek grants for that money. But we have to have a budget number for it and cover it if we're gonna take the effort on in case we don't get the grant. So, rather than getting any lengthy discussion on this, if you just have no interest in seeing the $25,000 budget line item and with some explanation on the night we have our budget hearing with her, then I'd just rather not have a wasted time. But if you're interested in hearing it and you see it in her budget, and only bring it up in advance, so when you get her budget and you see this additional $25,000 in there, you know why it's in there.
Okay, so I look at it maybe just a little different.
Okay.
And in the overall budget process, we're collecting inputs. You know, one is our normal operating expenses and other things that are there.
Level service, yeah.
Because they're there. And then there's initiatives that could come from anybody. And, you know, I think we look at them in the whole, and then we say, okay, well, can we, you know, where does this stand in the list of priorities? And then where do the funds come, and what doesn't get done if we do this, right? So, I think that, you know, we're not far enough down the budget stream to say, yeah, we can fit this in because we don't know whether priorities are gonna come up. But at the same time, you know, I think it's the kind of initiative, the kinds of things we should be looking at, and we should be moving forward with it best we can.
Yeah, and the reason I bring it up is there are objectives. And if there was other ideas on this board on how we're gonna achieve those objectives, not working with Danielle and through the CPC, to achieve that, that's all I wanted to make sure. If there wasn't somebody else's sort of had a different plan or a better plan on how we start to... Because I think these are very key.
Well, the only thing I would bring up, and maybe there should be a communication, is the Community Impact Team. There is the, one of the team...
Correct. And they're tied in on this senior housing initiative?
Yes.
They would be tied in on this. We would work with them.
Okay.
And she believes we...
Rich Wallace driving to along with the...
We are talking with Rich.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Yes, absolutely.
Any other board members have any comment?
Yeah, I think it's an initiative that we should be, should be considered, should be put forth for consideration for us, absolutely. I don't think it's spinning wheels in the wrong direction. I think, I think we'll do this market study out here. If it shows housing, you know, how's this gonna dovetail with that?
Yeah.
You know, we should be looking at, the CPC should be looking at zoning changes. When you have an aging population, when people are finding it more and more costly not being able to age in place, and maybe the need for more in-law apartments, legal in-law apartments, might be a consideration that we should be looking at going forward as part of this type of initiative. And then regular senior housing, opposed to allow people to, you know, stay in town but relocate.
Another thing we might wanna keep on our radar screen is when we go through the tax recap next year is to give some consideration to the, I don't remember the term for it, but the mix when you can shift the burden on low...
Lower assessed, low value property.
To the higher. Something that we might wanna at least study a little more closely than when we turn it back.
But again, I don't know exactly what, you know...
The Housing Production Plan?
What you're talking about, the details of it all.
Yeah.
The subject matter itself needs to be looked at.
Yeah.
And there's been a need to look at it for every year.
Well, the Housing Production Plan will actually collect a lot of that data analysis, and that's what will deliver to us. So, Danielle's prepared, going to prepare to present that in a very high-level form when we come in for the, she comes in for the budget discussion. So, you'll get a really good idea of what the $20,000, $25,000, what you're gonna get for it. And from that, will you be able to make the decisions that will help us achieve these objectives? So, I think, you know...
But I think we need, I think we need more data. We need more data. And I think the Planning Commission is the appropriate body to be doing it from a zoning standpoint and driving the bus on it.
That's why I went to them first to make sure they would be okay with it. And they were. They were fully supportive. They agreed. They said this really does fit within our scope, our responsibility.
Sounds like your fellow board members are on board.
We're accepting those things.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda was meeting schedule. Michael Gilberto and I on Wednesday just kind of went through what we thought was scheduled for. Of course, December, we know, is 7 and 21. And then as we roll into January, the 11th and the 25th
11th and 25th?
Would be the normal meeting dates. And I guess one thing we wanna get a sense of is where board members are in terms of availability on those dates. Those would be our normal meeting dates. And then the MMA conference is on the 22nd and 23rd. And there'd be a board meeting on the 11th and the 25th. And February...
What was the conference date? I'm sorry.
1/23, 1/22 and 23.
22 and 23. And then February, we talked about... So, the 25th is, the February ends on the 31st on a Sunday. So, February...
You mean January.
January, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
January ends on the 31st. So, February, we wanted to try to nail down some dates.
So, we're gonna go back to the 1st and 3rd Monday like we always have.
Well, if we go to, that would then be the 8th and the 22nd.
No, it'd be the 1st and the 15th.
I'm sorry, but the 1st, the 1st is a week.
After the 25th.
After the 25th. So, that's right. That's wrong. So, when we talk, we talked about maybe the 8th and the 22nd.
Well, does that work with your budgeting schedule?
So, you get, believe it or not...
This is regularly scheduled meeting. That one I gave to the other...
We have a leap year, right?
Uh, yeah.
And we have five Mondays in February.
But there's Presidents' Day is the 15th of February, too, so we don't have that one, right?
We tried to put that in between meetings when working a schedule order. Because of the number of Mondays, it allowed us to...
So, we're talking about the 8th and the 22nd, correct?
Correct, yes. That would put us on an every other Monday meeting schedule, which is helpful from a standpoint of managing the workload at that time of year with the budget ongoing. And then, again, I believe it's February 27th is a Saturday budget hearing that's been scheduled.
February what?
27.
When's school break?
The week of the 15th, Selectment.
February 18th. Birthday week, the 15th.
So, we wanna have a meeting on that Monday?
Right.
Yeah, after. The meetings will be the 8th and the 22nd.
8th and the 22nd.
8th and the 22nd. Got it. Thank you, thank you.
Does that work for everybody?
Works for me.
27.
And then the budget meeting is the 27th, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Is that here? Does that...
Oh, I'm sorry, the 27th? Oh, yep, I got that in there already. That's an eight o'clock start?
Yes.
So, that is again the 20...
Budget day?
Yeah.
27.
27. It's usually an eight o'clock start?
Mm-hmm, yep.
So, then we could get back to the 7th and the 21st in April.
What happened to March?
What?
It'll be the 1st and 3rd Monday in March.
We're on vacation.
So, that would be the 7th and the...
7th and the 21st.
21st of March, correct.
That gets us back on the... Does that work for everybody?
For me.
Michael, do you have anything else you wanted on that? Far enough?
On that particular issue, no, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Town Administrator's report.
It's the 21st. This is what's asked of the history to write in the old notebooks. Guys, three times as long as you are.
Me, too.
I want you to know, I'm done.
I'm done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Three brief items. First, I included a copy of the Status of DPW's Winter Weather Preparations for the Board's Information. Secondly, I attended an Elevating Municipal Partnerships Conference in Worcester on November 12th. I included a copy of the meeting packet and just a comment more for the community and for our residents rather than the board members. But it was clear that North Reading is an active partner with the state, most recently evidenced by our approved Community Compact for Economic Development, Infrastructure, and Regional Transportation. And I believe I provided the board members information with regard to the opportunity for a signing that'll be held in Melrose. We've also hosted Secretary Ash for a tour at economic development discussions and are evaluating our infrastructure programs such as Mass Works for potential funding sources for our water projects. So, it really more highlighted the fact that we are active, we're visible to the state. The state knows what our priorities are, and I think they recognize and want to be helpful where the resources allow.
Yeah, but I saw in the presentation that we're not listed as one of the Community Compacts.
In the meeting materials? It's purely because at the time it was published, I don't know that our compact had been signed off at the Lieutenant Governor's Office. And they aren't speaking publicly about them until the Lieutenant Governor comes to sign, which won't be until December.
Oh, got it, got it, got it.
We received approval from the staff, at least the Department of Revenue, in October, I believe.
That makes sense.
When are we supposed to meet in Melrose?
I'll circulate it out. I may have just given it to the Chair and the Vice Chair when it came in on Friday, but I'll make sure everyone gets the date. And finally, just a note, as some of the board members may know, I've been working with NORCAM to record a recurring broadcast to provide information on a timely basis for timely issues. The first one, which was recorded in advance of the October town meeting, featured the town clerk. The most recent one, which was recorded in November, features the Water Superintendent, Mark Clark, discussing the town's water system needs, as well as the proposed interconnection with the MWR-8 through Redding. It should be up on NORCAM's YouTube page shortly. And I'd encourage those interested in learning more about the town's water system to take a look. I found it particularly interesting to learn a little bit about the history of the town's water system from Mr. Clark and his experience and research. But it's something that I hope to continue to do to provide information to residents through a different medium that they'll find useful and timely. But again, most importantly, the water project is a significant project. We know we're talking about it regularly. We want people to be familiar with it. This is another opportunity, if you're curious to learn more about it, check out NORCAM, both of them have broadcast on TV, as well as through their YouTube page. Phil, I'm not sure whether it's up yet, but it should be up shortly, I'm sure.
It'll be up this week, but yeah, it was a really good episode. Very informative.
Thanks for your help. And that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Take them, Michael.
The Community Compact is on the 15th of March, I believe, 3:30.
Okay, thank you.
Signing.
Mr. O'Leary?
First of all, I'd just like to comment, Redding, North Reading Chamber of Commerce, the holiday tree lighting on the common, very successful. The common looks great.
The weather was beautiful.
Beautiful. And again, the local businesses supporting the community, beautifying it, and lighting it. So, we just wanna acknowledge that and thank them for their efforts. And then I'd just like to mention the passing of Franklin Stan Davis, Red Davis, longtime local businessman in North Reading. Former resident, moved to North Andover a few years ago, but certainly left his, an impact on the community. He built Park Colony Apartments, Greenbrier Apartments, established local businesses here. Winds Friction Distribution Center was here a few years ago. And he was the representative for the Northeast region. Contributed substantially to the community and had a good, good, long life. But contributed great to the community and, again, appreciate all of his efforts over the years and just want to acknowledge his passing. And that all said, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Yule?
Yes, first of all, I'd like to recognize the day in infamy today, December 7th. And for all those who have perished and who I also express my sympathies for all those who have been either wounded or been killed in California. It's a sad time. It's happening. These types of shootings are happening all too often. There are reasons for them, which I won't get into. But it's a concerning time for our country as we enter a holiday season that we have to be looking over our shoulder more than ever before, so... But on the brighter side, the high school's having its play, A Christmas Story. There'll be, I think, the final two showings are this Friday and Saturday. I'll be able to go on Friday. I understand it's a good show. It did well. And it's the first time they're doing something like this, from what I recall. So, if anybody's listening, they want something to do Friday and Saturday, go see A Christmas Story.
You can buy the tickets online.
And that's right, you can buy the tickets online. Thank you.
You can pick your seats, too.
Kate?
I'll see you there Friday.
I'm gonna dial back to Thanksgiving. I know we're already into Christmas, but I had a few runners go to the Turkey Trot and a bunch of neighbors do the Turkey Trot. And it was amazingly well-organized and fun event. So, congratulations to the organizers and all the runners and all the people who successfully made it to the finish line. Yeah, right. That's it.
Couple things. Not sure if you all know that I am a voting member of the Economic Development Council for the Governor in Secretary Ash's Economic Development, Housing and Economic Development Council. Tomorrow, we're meeting when I vote to accept the strategic plan. And it's been great being part of that. I'm learning a lot, giving us a lot of insight, giving me a lot of insight to economic development strategies across the Commonwealth.
strategies across the Commonwealth. If you're interested, I'm more than happy to send that to the town administrator to put up in, after Dropbox, if anyone's interested in reading.
I think that would be great.
It's about twenty-something pages, but I think there's a tremendous amount of information that we can pull from this plan. They do, they used a SWOT analysis, they did very similar to what we did. So, you know, we should be pretty proud of ourselves, because they're trying to actually get caught up in what we're doing. But there's a lot of unique stuff there, and you'll see, they have a lot of same issues from a Commonwealth perspective that we have here locally. But I think our strategy actually feeds into helping them achieve some of their missions and some of their goals, and I think it's wonderful.
Hope so.
When you read it, you're, yeah.
I hope so.
I hope so. And tomorrow, we're going to be voting it in, and I'm excited about it, and so it's a good, great team to be sworn in on, so I'm very fortunate, and thank the governor for choosing me to be part of that. Wanted to propose something for the board to consider. It gets cold in this room when it gets cold out, right? I mean, for the winter months, would you be willing to go to the distance learning lab just for the winter months for our meetings? Because it's really hard to hear with that heat running, and it does get cold in here. I mean, my feet, your feet are going to freeze. If we're not, you know, nobody has a stomach for it, but it gets a little uncomfortable. We have this beautiful new facility, I'm only talking for maybe a few months, just during the coldest times, that you consider it.
You know, I mean, I, that was one of my first thoughts a long, long time ago, until I actually saw this school building committee meeting in a room, and the way the room is set up, that is just, you know, the school committee in there, I, I don't know, I feel more comfortable in this arrangement than what you'd end up doing, that's the only issue. As far as the heat, my wife lets me know when I get home on a cold winter night, I'm jumping to bed.
We should just get leg locks.
Yeah.
All right.
Feet are frozen stiff.
That's going to be your Christmas, my mind's on.
The other thing is too, you know, I wouldn't want to, they're not going to leave it sitting there without custodial staff, so I don't want to, there'll be costs associated with that.
Or we just have to be out of the by ten.
I guess it would only work when they're in sync, in the right sync with the school committee meeting, so.
Which is something that can get worked out.
Yeah.
Blanket, blanket.
Oh, I'm going to be fine, I'm wearing work boots here while they're following all the future meetings. Learned my lesson over the years.
Given this to me, now what?
Well-
Oh, I don't know, I read the note.
No, no, it, um-
Let's find out if Michael's finished, I don't think he is.
Um, I'm good.
You're good, okay. Yes, Jeff?
I'll forward that to you, Michael.
Because it was asked to have that signed, but is, can anybody on December twelfth, at-
One-thirty.
One-thirty?
At Aldersgate.
This young man will-
December twelfth is a Saturday.
It's a Saturday, they-
It's the Saturday.
Presentation of the, is it the Saturday?
The Saturday.
The Saturday, presentation of the Eagle Award for Noah Spicer. And usually someone from the town, sometimes, and also Mr. Jones and Mr. Tar usually attend these events. And last year, you know, I was there, and I won't be in town, so I can't go.
What time is it?
It's at one-thirty on Saturday.
And where is it?
Aldersgate.
Aldersgate, thank you.
Aldersgate.
Aldersgate.
Yeah.
All right, so.
And I think he's the only one receiving, otherwise we would have had-
From the information I saw, yes.
Yeah. But any, any one of us can go, I just am going to be out of town, so.
Does anybody, interest in it?
I'm a call, sure.
Do you want to make the presentation?
Sure.
I will pass it on.
I mean, I wasn't an Eagle Scout, I don't know if any of you were Eagle Scouts. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, is that, Jeff, is that, is that okay, all set?
Yeah, that's-
Mr. Chairman, I had one more thing.
Yes.
We had one meeting in between the Thanksgiving dinner, senior citizens dinner, I just wanted to acknowledge it, and once again, it was a wonderful, a wonderful day. Representative Tar, I assume Senator Tar, Representative Jones, and other sponsors like yourself, Mr. Chairman, wonderful day for three hundred and twenty-five or three hundred and fifty people.
Oh, it was fantastic.
It was a fantastic, fantastic day, and so, and then I also just wanted to-
The entertainment this year.
It was very good.
He changed his routine.
He changed his routine, he did a great job.
You know, I guess the other one was getting a little old.
It may have been the hurling match that he went to prior to coming to the party, to spur them on, I don't know.
Yeah, they were great.
But the other thing, yeah, the other thing I'd like to acknowledge is the courtesies and respect that you all showed to my mother. She certainly enjoyed the day, and enjoyed being with all of you, getting to meet you, and to get you in a wonderful time.
When we look back, we wouldn't have been there if it wasn't for her.
I know, but it was, I really appreciate the courtesies and respect, so, it's great.
And I was glad to see that, you know, she, she was able to make it.
I don't mean to belabor things, but about, I'm glad you brought up the Thanksgiving dinner, because the, you're right, the entertainment, the ambiance was great, but the entertainment was excellent, excellent again, but even more pointedly, you know, I think every year he sings the songs of each military group. And I'll tell you, that has, that has such a great impact on them, because where I was sitting, there was this one gentleman, who you could see him when he had to stand, and it was hard for him to stand, but he put his arm up, and then he worked his way up.
Right, yeah.
But you could see in his eyes the pride that he had, and he had, you know, he's failing in health, you can see that, but, but he had that pride, and that moment of feel-good, and that really reached out there, I was very impressed with that, the whole event.
Sadly, as the years go by, that great generation is disappearing, at a rapid rate, unfortunately, but that's life.
It's noted by the flag.
Anything else, Jeff, before I-
No, that's it, I'm sorry.
So I just want to report to the board that thanks to Michael Gilberto and Jean Bernard, they arranged to have a technical tour of the high school, with Kate and I and members of NORCAM, and the director of NORCAM, Rob, got his consultant to come. And we visited the gymnasium, we visited the distance learning lab, we visited the Performing Arts Center, and then downstairs where the D-Mark and Technology all ends up. And we took some notes, Kate sent those notes out to Michael and I, the consultants putting together a list of things. So the objective, Steve, was, I know you're on the committee, and there's been some issues associated with that, was to finally, once and for all, to take out all the emotions, and let's go see what we got. And then we can decide on what's really feasible and what's not, and, you know, get out of this whole argument that's been going on for too long. So I think the meeting was successful, we will have a review of the information when it's all pulled together, and then maybe from there, see if we can't move forward with something. The other good part of it is that, you know, it's clear that the technology at the school, combined with the knowledge and technology at NORCAM, combined, right, could bring the town a big step forward, if we get everybody working together. And I think we made a good, you can comment too, please, but, you know, a good step forward, hopefully we can keep it on that path. So I left there quite happy over what, you know, how everything went on.
Well, I don't really know.
There's more work to be done, but-
But I know the SSBC certainly appreciates you stepping in and refereeing a bit here, we'll get you a nice striped shirt, you do better than the guys at the Patriots game the other day, as far as officiating things, yes, so, but no, you took on the initiative.
Thanks.
Making progress is just great.
So I'm very comfortable about that, and of course, I think Jeff mentioned, you know, we, my wife and I, we took four, I can't call them grandkids anymore, because they're young adults, to the Christmas Story, and that was just, you know, phenomenal, and it was really appreciated by two of my granddaughters who are ballet dancers and have actually performed in the Nutcracker over the past ten years. I've gone to Nutcracker every Thanksgiving, right after Thanksgiving, and my oldest granddaughter was Clara for the second time.
Oh, wow.
And they really appreciated, won the facility and the overall presentation. I mean, we have a first-class facility here now, you know, and we ought to be proud of it, and Kate knows all about getting up in the, in the walkways up above, she braved it all the way to the very top, which got a good look at all the technology, it's pretty awesome, really pretty awesome, so, you know, overall, the kids did a phenomenal job, and to have, to have a live orchestra and the orchestra pit, and I don't know how long it takes them to get-
It takes them a long.
-take that pit apart and put it back together again, but it was really appropriate, and they did a phenomenal job, too, so. And with that, we have one more meeting before Christmas, and hopefully-
It won't snow.
...we can celebrate at our next meeting, and we'll try to keep the agenda to the point where we have a little bit of time to look back at the past year. I want to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Move to adjourn.
Who said second?
Second.
Jeff.
Anyone in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right.